All right, the time is now six o'clock. I'm gonna call the regular school board meeting to order. Tracy has taken roll call and we'll go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, thank you, and we'll go on to item number three, which is to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. If there are no changes, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as written. Moved by trustee of Garris, second by trustee Wollek. Any public comment on the agenda item? All those in favor for approving tonight's agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now we'll move on to item four, which is to approve minutes for the special trustee minute, special meeting on October 17th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee of Garris. Any trustee comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor for approving the special meeting on October 17th, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 17th, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee of Garris. Any trustee comments? Any public comment on the agenda item? All those in favor for approving the regular board meeting minutes of October 17th, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 24th, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee of Garris. Any trustee comments? Trustee Mercer.
Just abstaining because I wasn't here.
Thank you. Any public comment on agenda item? All those in favor for the regular board meeting minutes of October 24th, please indicate yes by raising your hand. You got it, all right, thank you. All right, so now we're on to item number five, which is the community connection. And I'll go ahead and turn this agenda item over to superintendent Hill for the introduction.
Good evening. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce Billy Joe Juno, who is the head of our Native American Student Services and is coordinator for that department. And she's here to share a little bit about what's been happening at MCPS within her department and MCPS as a whole. This is Native American Heritage Month, and so we are glad to have you today.
Thank you for having me. I'm glad there's such a huge turnout for my presentation tonight. So exciting. I didn't know everybody was this excited about Indian Ed. No, I know why they're all here. So I just want to thank you guys. I want to give a shout out to a couple of people who believed in creating a few changes this year and allowing me to be here as a coordinator. I know Amy Shattuck, who was a big push behind that. Vinny and Ms. Olperson and the previous superintendent, Russ Lodge. So just a couple of things. So I have, the Native American Indian Student Service Department has a few specialists and we go around to their schools. We present, we provide basically information to help teachers with lessons. And we've had a few changes this past year. And we'll just kind of go to the restructuring and changes. So a few changes this year was my position was created prior to this. It was primarily just specialists and run by the federal directors of grant program or some, some program with a really long name oversaw the Native American program. And so they actually created this position, and so I oversee the department now. And I think that that was a huge plus to the department, having somebody there that isn't, has an administrative background but had been involved in schools, been a director of a Native American Studies Program in Browning, for Browning Public Schools. And just being able to see all of the possibilities and having so much passion and wanting to see Indian Ed get pushed out there. So I actually asked at the beginning of this year if we could create an Indian Education For All Instructional Coach. That person just started November 1st, so that's a recent physician. And the reason we have academic coaches, we have people that are, as part of this district, that go in and help teachers teach regular education. Well, we probably could do a little bit better in getting Indian Ed out there for everybody. And I know there's a lot of barriers, there's a time. People don't feel comfortable teaching it. And so we wanted to basically take one of those away, which was time. So we, I asked that this position be created because now I have somebody in the staff that actually goes and helps create lessons so that teachers can deliver those lessons and delve into the curriculum, look at where we can integrate Indian Ed for all within the current curriculum without it having to be something that's just an add-on. The specialists are a little bit different because of budgeting, my position, and then the coach's position. That cut down a little bit on how many specialists that could be offered. And so we do only have about four and a half specialists. I say that because one person is halftime certified and halftime specialist. So we had to pick a different model. Instead of having specialists assigned to every elementary school in years past, what we are doing now is we're basically servicing all elementary schools, but servicing them in a way of doing presentations, whether that's going into classrooms and doing lessons or assemblies. And that has received really good feedback so far. We've been able to get into regularly Chief Charlo and Paxton Elementary on a regular basis and do lessons. Those lessons are based on a thematic unit. And so we are able to go through and do these thematic units with these schools. And so those lessons are actually banked later on for teachers to use as resources. And then we'll basically be able to build on those lessons going on. Our high schools are a little bit different in the sense that we don't do those types of assemblies with them. High schools and middle schools have a little bit different format this year. We're actually targeting a little bit of the native population in those buildings. And so we've had our specialists join the MTSS groups, so multi-tiered systems of support committees within each of the high schools and middle schools, and targeting those students most in need or even those students who aren't in need in terms of academics or behavior, but just need that person to talk to and are kind of referred to us. So we're still interacting with the high schools and middle schools on that level and providing services. One of the great things we're doing with high schools and middle schools is we're actually taking them on a buffalo harvest this year. So they'll be going, actually on Friday, a meeting with Great Falls Public Schools to do a buffalo harvest. So we're pretty excited about that. The, the goals of the program, there are two different goals that basically run our program. And our first goal, or one of the goals, is our Title VI funding. We get Title VI money. So that means that if you're Native American and there's a specific form you fill out that says you're Native American, we actually get money from the federal government for that. And so that sustains one or part of the programs and pays for salaries. And so we have different goals based on our Title VI funding, as it's called. And so because Title VI is specifically for native students, we have a parent advisory committee. And then we send out these needs assessments. And these assessments tell us what our goals are going to be because it's just a survey. Parents, community members will vote on what they feel that we need to do. So our goals for this year, three goals that were decided basically last year was to increase knowledge of cultural identity for Native American students and family, prevention activities, and then to decrease the dropout rate. And then this one I kind of set myself, was that our Title VI counts are incorrect currently. We have listed over 600 Native American students in Missoula County Public Schools, but we're only receiving funding for maybe around 400. So there's a discrepancy in numbers. If we could get those students or those 506 forms back, then that means that our funding will go up. So based on our Title VI program, we have different types of activities that we've planned. And we have, we had a round dance, round dance on American Indian Heritage Day. And that was at C.S. Porter. All of these events are on our website. So if you're ever interested, you can go to our website and check them out and see what, some of the things that we have going on in the community. And everybody's actually invited to those. One of the great things that we've done, which was so shocking to me, was we actually purchased a teepee for the school district. So we, there wasn't really a teepee here in the school district for a number of years. And so we actually purchased our first one. And come this, come May, yeah, May, we're going to go over teepee etiquette. And that just baffled me because like I come from a place where there's tons of teepees and I talked to Great Falls Public Schools. And they were like, yeah, we just set up 23 teepees. And I'm like, what? Where's our teepee? So they are pretty pricey, just so you know. They do run about $1,900. So if anybody's wanting to donate. So you know, we did purchase our first teepee. We did have a chance to set it up. So you'll see in the pictures there. And the crazy thing is, is you know, if you don't know a lot about teepees, there's different styles. It's not just a teepee. So I had a lady within our department purchase a teepee. And it was a Sioux-style teepee. And most of the people in our department are Blackfeet. And most of you are like, what's the difference? So the Sioux-style actually has three poles, you know, to, as a base. And the Blackfeet has four poles. So if you wondered how long it took like for Blackfeet to set up a Sioux-style teepee, it was a bit. So we actually got that going. So come this May, we'll actually be going around to the schools and set that up with students. And I've talked to the MEF Foundation to actually purchase a nine-foot teepee to take that around to the elementary school so they can practice setting one of those up. We also had a Halloween carnival, which was well-attended. And we're currently in a, in the process this month of creating ribbon skirts, our star quilts, with the community members. And we've probably had at least 35 to 40 participants each year, which is great. So you'll probably see a lot more ribbon skirts in the community within the school system for students because we've had a lot of parents and students coming in to make those, which is a great opportunity for them. We've also done some harvesting, specifically at Two Sisters, our Three Sisters out at Pease Farm. But I mean, it's been great, just kind of going around and teaching kids about the different types of foods that natives traditionally harvested or the first foods. And if I had mentioned on the website, this is what you'll see is just an image of everything that we plan on doing throughout the year for students. So that's the first piece of our, our goals for the program. The second piece of the goals for the program is actual Indian education for all. So this is the one, my Article 10 mandated by the state. And this is more where myself and my instructional coach comes in. So what we've done is we actually have set up planning sessions in our professional development portal for teachers to sign up and come and seek help with their lessons that they are already doing or currently have in mind. We're also kind of on a referral system where we've already had Sentinel reach out. We've had Russell reach out and Rattlesnake and helping develop lessons garnered towards IEFA and implementing different aspects of that within their classrooms. We have planned some professional development with the curriculum department in February. So we'll be doing some PD then. But we're also doing a couple online PDs in February and in March. That's called IEFA 101. So that's open for staff to choose to take if they would like. So those are some of the things that we have planned. And we're also, are currently working on developing lessons K through five and six through eight that are covered basically in all grade levels. We wanted to create two lessons per trimester in those grade levels to help integrate IEFA into what our curriculum currently is. And then again, we go around and we do monthly activities and lessons at each of the elementary schools, which you'll see in the next picture. So we've, you can look at the slides here. This was kind of cool. So the potato dance. Some people didn't know what the potato dance was. And actually, it's kind of fairly recent because I'm pretty young, right Willie? And this was not taught to us when we were growing up in our, any of our classes. And so this potato dance was pretty interesting. And we have one of our specialists and a teacher demonstrating it where people, if you ever watched Res Dogs, there's a dance there where they have a potato between their forehead and they dance. And you have to keep the potato between your, between your foreheads without using your hands. And so it's kind of a fun, a fun dance that the students really enjoyed that. Oh my gosh. And we had kids, I had kids wanting to take the potatoes home, kids wanting to eat them. I'm like, no, there's like been 2000 hands on those. Maybe not that many, but. And then we had a round dance during that theme too of social dances with all of the, with the elementaries. Couple of, we went over harvesting and students were actually taught the different types of places to harvest. And one of them, one of the stations, we had students actually make a fish trap. And so it was really interesting to see how creative some of those students were in terms of creating that fish trap to catch some fish. And a lot of people most likely, you know, think of Buffalo in terms of Plains Indians, Montana. But living this close to Salish, they have the Flathead Lake there. So fishing was a part of those. So we try to incorporate at least all of the Montana tribes within our presentations. I know there's a lot of nations out there, but you know, IEFA does focus on Montana tribes. And so we do try to include as much of that as possible. And that's kind of a nutshell of everything that we've been doing. And I mean, there's just so much. The kids are loving it. We've got a lot of positive feedback. And so I'm really excited. And I'm looking forward to kind of going into classrooms once we get some of the teachers going on lessons and observing them teach those. So I guess my next slide is just if you have any questions.
Any trustee questions? Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yes, I was curious about your mention of how we have undercounted the number of Title VI kids. Now, is that because it's a self-report? Or it's just people haven't keeping track of it? Or what is the reasons?
I think it might just be a combination of both. A lot of people, because they have to put their enrollment numbers down. Title VI will go all the way down to their grandparents. So student, parent, or grandparent. And a lot of times, they don't know, they know that they're, you know, they are a descendant, but they don't know their grandparents' enrollment number. And that's one of the requirements in order to count.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Mercer.
So a couple PTAs ago at Washington, there was discussion of the PTA buying books for the Indian Education For All Unit. And I was confused by that. Like, why wouldn't those be provided? Is there, I mean, we do provide, right? I mean, this is mandated. We, I guess that's my, maybe, I don't know if this question for you or for the administration, but.
I honestly, I don't know what books we would be referring to.
They were a novel, if that makes any difference.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I haven't seen any requests come forward or anything like that. But we do have a specific budget that we allocate for Indian Education For All activities. And then we also work that through Barbara's department from a curriculum standpoint. So yeah, we just haven't seen anything. Didn't know that was a conversation.
Any other trustee questions? Any comments? I have a comment. I just want to thank you for taking on this lead for change in that department. I'm very excited and glad you're on board. I know Sentinel didn't want to lose you, but I'm glad you're with, in the admin team now.
Thank you.
All right. So now we'll move on to, we'll move on to item six, which is public comment and correspondence. We have received written comment and we did view those. And now we'll go on to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there a public comment for non-agenda items?
We do have a public comment for non-agenda items.
All right, so for a public comment, there, it's a portion of the meeting that's set aside for the public to address the board as the body. It is not a time for board response or to, for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. You are limited to three minutes. And the chair may interrupt if the statements are out of order or if you're over the time. Also, I know we just clapped for the presentation, but for public comment, we will have no applause or no, anything outside of that for tonight's meeting. So public comment.
The first commenter tonight is Joe Fisher. Please sign in and say and spell your name.
Please turn your mic on.
Check. Joe Fisher, J.O.E.F.I.S.C.H.E.R. And thank you. I am Joe Fisher. I'm a teacher at Sentinel High School and also a taxpayer to MCPS. And after looking around and seeing all the baseball folks, I thought we should start out, we should have started out with the National Anthem because it felt more like a sporting event. So I love this as a social studies teacher because this is one of the few places where we see democracy in action. And for people to have issues and have an opportunity to be heard is very, very important. So I appreciate that. As a teacher for a long time, I have always been a supporter of any activity club program, just like we heard about with Indian Ed, that supports the values and the statements and the goals of MCPS. So I've always been very supportive of that. And with that being said, on the issue of implementing baseball.
So this is an agenda item. So if you have public comment on an agenda item, you will need to do that when we get to that in the agenda.
We will call you back up when it's time.
I apologize. Yeah, so this is for non-agenda items. You'll be first when we get to that part, Mr. Fisher.
The next person is Patricia Palin.
I'm Patricia Palin. I teach at Hellgate High School. I have written something up that's under three minutes.
Please spell your name.
Last name is P.A.L.I.N. Is it okay to go? Sorry. I believe that if you see something isn't right, say something. Most people see the beautifully remodeled parts of MCPS. However, behind the scenes, maintenance is lacking and buildings are falling apart. I teach CTE and have a culinary classroom at Hellgate. Starting spring of 2023, the culinary room was slowly losing hot water, not enough to finish the day. This was written up in 11 emails starting April 5th. I stressed the issue of sanitation in several emails. Surely by summer, it would be fixed. And it was written up as a priority. Nothing was done. Fall 2023, the principal advised me to keep sending an email out weekly until hot water issue was fixed. To keep classes rolling, we boiled water, which was not only inconvenient, but a tremendous safety and sanitation issue that was still not a priority to resolve. During these months, at no time was I contacted by maintenance to see if the issue was fixed. In fact, a team of plumbers came into my room the week of October 16th, ran the water, and said the water was not hot. I then decided to look outside the district for help. The issue was fixed by my contacting the Missoula Building Code Plumbing Inspector seven months, three days, 11 emails, and a dozen phone calls later. Still waiting on fixes of these items. The roof is leaking into my room. If we get enough rain, one of the leaks runs down a vent hood above an electric range and pulls on the range top. The girls' bathroom off my classroom ceiling is falling in. Possible asbestos? Two faucets are old auto off and the springs are worn out. One has a constant leak. The other has to be manually pulled up to shut off. Many times every week, I have to go in and shut the water off if I hear it running. A sink in the welding room has been leaking for months. An email, including a video, was sent to maintenance and stated that the sink could not be turned off at the faucet, which is filling 20, 12 and a half gallons an hour and 300 gallons a day. For years, a boys' bathroom off first-floor CTE has needed attention. One toilet floods the bathroom floor daily. Another does not flush, so the bathroom always smells of urine. Another concern, custodians tell me the culinary classroom is the hottest during the warm months, coldest in the winter. The room is too cold to even keep a peace plant alive. The cold months, I must run three space heaters to keep a functioning classroom. Warm months, when seven ovens are on, there is no swamp cooler to cool the space. Recently, there were 40 work orders for Hellgate sent to maintenance, multiply 40 by the number of schools. I am asking you to do something about these issues. Hold the head of maintenance accountable. Years ago, one person did this job and kept buildings maintained. There are now three persons for the same one maintenance supervisor, and buildings are deteriorating. Are these persons under a yearly evaluation as we teachers are? Is this the MCPS way? Thank you.
The next public speaker is Charlotte Struna.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Struna, C.H.A.R.L.O.T.T.E., last name, capital S.T.R.U.N.A. And I'm here to support Trish Palin and other people in the district that we need to stand together if we see something that's not right and say something. And not sure if you guys are aware because there was a big, big ol' levy passed and a lot of remodels that were done. Here's some of the things at my school Meadow Hill. There's no drinking fountains in the sixth grade end or seventh and eighth grade end. There are two fountains that are, have drinking water in our entire building. We, from what I've heard from my principal, we're second on the list to have our pipes replaced in the district. And that, the soonest that's going to happen is 2025. We're bringing in two Culligan water stations. The gas valves in the science lab leak. It's been documented. Was supposed to be fixed during the remodel. That didn't happen. It's still dangerous. In that same science lab, one out of 17 sinks work correctly. The intercom system is not working in some classrooms. There's a sink drip in several classrooms. Work orders have been put in and they're still leaking. Two years, we've been waiting for a boys' bathroom urinal to be fixed. It's been work ordered several times. One year, a girls' bathroom toilet hasn't been fixed. Weather stripping was never put under doors during the remodel, causing snow to blow inside. Windows need replaced or sealed. Ceiling tiles need replaced and apparently have been ordered, but haven't been sent to the buildings. There are old chemicals in the science lab from years ago, and this has been brought to the attention. They're leaking, they're toxic. The teacher was told by district maintenance to gather them up and take them to hazmat days. Hot water in the teacher's lounge. This is my personal one. I put it in an order for that two years ago because we can't do the dishes in there. The water's not hot enough unless you boil it like they had to do at the home ec kitchens at Hellgate. They came back to my work order with the response of the water out there. Is that coming out at the heated minimum? We all laughed about it in the building and said, who came and tested it? Because we've tested it. That water comes out of that faucet at 85 degrees is the hottest it gets, after running several times, et cetera. So, thank you, board members and everyone for your service. But let's not put the cart before the horse. I hear we're asking for another levy. Who's checking on upper admin positions? Who signs off on what's paid for? We can't buy anything without approval. They say Hellgate's remodel took away from the rest of the district. But how did that happen and who let that happen? Are we really going to ask this town for more levies? Let's fix what we need to fix before we get something brand new. Thank you.
Is there anyone whose name I didn't call who would like to make comment on a non-agenda item tonight? No further public comment.
All right, thank you. So now we're on to item seven, which are reports and announcements. And there is no oral report for the Health Insurance Trust Fund. And we will move on to our student trustee reports. And first, we'll start off with Big Sky High School.
Hello, everybody. We've seen a lot of positive momentum at Big Sky since the last time we've met. And we look forward to sharing that with you tonight. So we have 10 students that are now in Reading Open Your World volunteers, which they go to Target Range School and they go every Thursday and read to the elementary students. We are collecting cans for the cans, the cats, to donate to the Missoula Food Bank. To no, do, sorry. Donations are accepted through the 17th Sorry, donations are accepted through the 17th and the winning class gets a prize. We also have over 30 families signed up for our November meal kits. This is our Fall Title I Family Engagement Event. Our Family Resource Center puts together meal kits along with video produced by our Culinary 3 students on how to make dessert. Going on to some more specifics within our clubs at Big Sky. The theater has been very busy. Their fall show was A Little Murder Never Hurt Anyone, which was a production with Love Suspense and A Little Murder for the Halloween season. They also put on their annual cabaret show, which was excellent. FFA is continuing their excellence, and their hard work is showing off in competitions in Indianapolis. Speech and Debate is ready for a great season and has competed in Kalispell and Bozeman. Student Government has put on a trunk or tree event where all of our clubs set up stations, and we had a great turnout. Student Government was able to organize this event and buy all the candy through the money that we made from homecoming. We were hoping to give back to all the other clubs that are part of Big Sky. Looking forward to the rest of this year in Student Gov. We will be partnering with GSA for a clothing drive where people can clean out their closets, swap clothes, or donate. Additionally, starting this week, we've taken another step to enhance and encourage student involvement and get some feedback, particularly in the realm of clubs and activities. We've initiated a survey for Student Voices, which will be available and sent out repeatedly throughout the year. The effort is to give students a platform to share their perspectives and on the various clubs and activities through the year, whether it's drama, Dungeons and Dragons, football. These clubs are a big part of our school community, and it's something that's super special for students to be a part of. The survey is open to everyone, and we encourage all students to participate and share their thoughts as we want to make sure as many people as we can hear their voices.
Next year, Big Sky will be adding three academies. They'll be adding an architect, construction, manufacturing, and engineering academy, an ag, science, and natural resource academy, and a media business academy. Recently, Big Sky Academy students were able to go visit the middle schools, such as Target Range and Hellgate, and they were able to talk to the eighth graders about the upcoming school year and just kind of introduce what the academies will look like and just give them some tips on choosing which academy they want to enroll in next year. November and October were busy months for Big Sky. We had a great turnout for PSAT testing. We've had our first choir and band concerts. Our choir teacher, Ms. Labby, received Outstanding Choral Music Educator of the Year, which was given by the Montana Choral Directors Association. Big Sky has been hosting the AA Choir Festivals this week from Missoula County. They've had rehearsals Monday and Tuesday and have had evening performances from students across the district. The orchestra had their first concert this year, and the band was able to collaborate, do a collaboration concert with Torah schools, and they played in the All-State Big Sky Band. They were also able to collaborate with CS Porter Eighth Grade Band and the Art Club, creating pieces inspired by music. National Honor Society has been helping out the community, looking for ways to serve. Recently, they did a coin drive where all the proceeds went to Soft Landing, which is a local nonprofit that helps refugee and immigrant families as they start their new lives in Missoula. And they also are going to be doing a giving tree for the holiday season for Hawthorne Elementary students. Sorry. The band and choir have been hosting fundraisers as they look to fundraise for upcoming trips, such as a New Orleans band trip. As the fall season ends, Big Sky's winter sports are starting with basketball. Open gym starting and their tryouts coming up next week. Look forward to all of our winter sports. And then recently, we had two students participate in EQuest, an event in Bozeman, where they engage with distinguished figures like Ambassador Richard Boucher. During the event, they learned about fossil reservations mixed with living history, and they were able to visit the Museum of Rockies in Bozeman. They attended a job fair that featured the possibilities, and the latest manufacturer technology and the latest laser technology was featured. And they were able to see a lot of cool things like drones and self-driving cars and defensive technology. And they also toured the labs at MSU, which are very rare. And they were able to see the latest technology and industry for high-speed internet and medical equipments. And that's all we have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Now we'll have Hellgate High School report.
Thank you. To briefly give a synopsis of our sports, we just held our winter sports meeting, giving informative information on our wrestling, basketball, and swimming teams. And our girls' soccer went to state in the last two weeks and got placed second. The first time Hellgate girls have ever made it to the soccer state finals. Boys placed fourth at state, and our volleyball girls played in divisionals, as well as girls cross-country winning state and having five girls enter Allstate. Our boys also got fifth in state with three boys entering Allstate. Cross-country went to NXR this weekend in Idaho with the girls placing seventh, which was the fourth time in history they were ever in the top 10.
For our activities, we have our first-ever dodgeball tournament of champions coming up on November 16th. We're having teams of eight to 10 members sign up at a price of $5 per team member. And then the money from the participation fees is going to be donated to Hellgate families in need during the holiday season. And along with the participation fees, we're also raising money through raffles. We've received donations from multiple businesses across Missoula, and the attendees at the event will be able to purchase tickets, and the additional money from this will be donated to the families in need as well. At the end of October, we had students from our Japanese sister school in Kumamoto come to Hellgate from the 22nd to the 25th. And they were able to stay with families from Hellgate and kind of be with them for the few days that they were in Missoula. And we had a little assembly for them where we had our band and choir perform and the orchestra. And Speech and Debate also had one of their first tournaments, and they did really well. Hellgate also sent the most musicians to Allstate in all band, orchestra, and choral sections, and that went exceptionally well for them. Over this past weekend, we had our Fall Play at Hellgate Alice in Wonderland opening on Thursday and went through Saturday, which are always a big part of, a lot of the people in the Hellgate community go to those. We have many NHS projects, which is National Honor Society, starting around the school. We have lots of drives going on. We can't wait to see the impact that these students are going to make on the community. The AA Choir Festival was also held in the past few weeks, including chamber choirs from Sentinel, Big Sky, and Hellgate, which Hellgate was very excited to attend. And then coming up this week, Student Government is doing, with their Mental Health Committee, is doing an initiative which we're asking students to write something on a piece of paper that they're thankful for. So, it has at the top, "I'm thankful for," and they're going to write that out. And we're putting these on posters and hanging them around the school just around this time before Thanksgiving to kind of just remind everyone about things they're thankful for. And next week, we're also sending students to the annual Model UN. So, that's something that we're really excited for at Hellgate.
And finally, we held our PSAT about two weeks ago, which went great. And then IB and AP test payments are due this week. That is all.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll do Sealy Spawn High School.
Can you hear us, Aubrey?
One moment, Aubrey. We're having some technical difficulties. Go ahead, Aubrey.
Sorry, Aubrey. Give us one more moment. We're still trying to get you in both rooms. Could you go ahead and try again, Aubrey? Go ahead with your... Can you hear us, Aubrey?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This week, our Leo's Club will be hosting a Turkey Drive where they will raise money for the Sealy Lake Food Bank. It will be the sixth annual... Am I good?
We lost you for a moment, but I think you're good again.
Okay. This will be our sixth annual Turkey Drive, and we have raised nearly $4,000 in total. Our Business Professionals of America Club members have been working weekly on their events in preparation for the upcoming regional competition, and they will be volunteering for a third time this Wednesday at the Sealy Lake Community Foundation. Our entrepreneurship class held a Shark Tank presentation last week where the individual business owners in the valley came into class to hear the students' business pitches. The students received feedback and suggestions for their final preparations for the third Black Hawk Biz Market Day, which will be held on December 16th at the high school from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They have 14 businesses this year, so we've seen it grow in the class from the last two years. For briefly on our sports, Black Hawk basketball practice will start this Thursday, and they'll begin preparing for the tip-off tournament, which will be held in Hamilton at the beginning of December. Both teams have interest this season from both returning upperclassman players, as well as a good amount of younger classmen. So, our sports teams have been growing lately, and that shows a good promise for the future. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Aubrey. Sorry for the technical difficulties. So now we'll move on to Sentinel High School.
Alrighty. Hello and good evening. As we approach winter, Sentinel is getting ready for many fun activities, events, and sports. So, I'll give you a little roadmap of what I'm going to go into. First, I'll talk about sports. Then I'll go over some of our activities. And then I have some stuff on our Sentinel culture. All right. So first, for sports, football, volleyball, soccer, and cross-country have all concluded their seasons. They all had amazing results, and this season, their events never failed to bring together the Sentinel community. And as the leaves turn, so do the sports. So, basketball is starting up within the next two weeks. Same with wrestling and swimming. They're encouraging a lot of new members to join and just get more people involved. Dance and Cheer are preparing for their performances and stunts to accompany the basketball games, which are coming up. Now to go into some activities. Key Club is sponsoring the Can the Cats event at school, and the homeroom with the most donations receives a donut party. So, we hope to see a lot of donations. Theater is wrapping up rehearsal for their performance of A Midsummer Night's Dream, which will be on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Speech and Debate had two tournaments so far and has had amazing results, especially among the new members, which is great to see. And Hosa is sponsoring a coin drive for a fellow student who unfortunately was struck by a vehicle and is currently in Seattle being treated for their injuries. And Student Government is currently working very hard on planning the long-awaited Golden Goat Game and planning Fireside, the dance. Sentinel has many other clubs to offer. Some are just starting up, but some have been going on all year. We have Model UN, BPA, Art Club, Robotics, Chess Club, Math Club, and so many more. So, it's great to see that we have something that is offered for every student. To go into Sentinel culture, we also offer Lewis and Clark and Row, which has seen amazing, amazing results. Sentinel has been working really hard on litter pickup within the parking lots. We've seen that this has been a pretty big struggle, at least for as long that I've been there. So, we've brought some dumpsters in, and it's been looking a little bit cleaner. But we're still working on getting everyone to pick up their garbage in the parking lot because it's pretty gross. Also, the bathrooms were just recently painted, and I think the consensus among most of the students is that it's really nice to have a cleaner environment that is not completely vandalized. So, it was really nice to see the bathrooms looking new and clean. And I'd say overall, Sentinel has felt very structured. Just another consensus among the student population is that it feels like there's definitely... We just have a lot more guidance throughout the school. And I believe that, as I said last meeting, the new phone policy has been really helpful. Also, hall monitors in the hallway, and now we're really just working on more student accountability, students cleaning up their messes, and just being respectful so we can keep Sentinel nice, clean, and structured. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you all for your reports. And now we'll move on to 7C, which are announcements from Superintendent Hill.
All right. Just a couple of quick announcements. As you know, the Board of Public Education and the Legislative Interim Committee will be on education. I should clarify, on education will be here in Missoula. They'll actually be hosting Board of Public Ed in the boardroom tomorrow and Thursday. And the Board of Public Ed will be touring some of our facilities, Lowell, Sentinel, and Hellgate, to see what's going on in MCPS, and we can't wait to showcase that. The other thing we learned is that just today, I got an email that the Board of Public Ed will be reviewing our charter applications on November 30th. And so, myself and maybe some of my team will be joining me to do two 20-minute presentations on our charter school applications on November 30th. So, and we'll have more information about that on our website, so we'll keep the board informed on that. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. So, we'll move on to Item 8, which is the Consent Agenda. There is no board discussion for consent agenda items as they are routine items. So first up, we'll have the elementary motion to approve elementary consent agenda items. Is there a motion? Moved by Trustee F. Garrus, second by Trustee Witt. There is no board discussion. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the motion of the consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. And now we'll go on to the high school motion for the consent agenda items. Is there a motion? Moved by Trustee Wake, second by Trustee Wallach. There is no board discussion. Any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor for approving the high school consent agenda, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So now we'll move on to 9, which is Old Business. And first up is the topic is to approve the second reading of policy revisions. And this again is back over to you, Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. In front of you tonight are a list of 10 policies that were previously reviewed.
Do we skip the disposal of records? Okay, cool. Thanks.
Oh, yeah. That's part of Consent Agenda. Yeah, no, it's the part of consent. Thank you, Trustee Wallach.
So, was it part of the consent agenda heading?
Just to clarify. It's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. All right. So, in front of you, 10 policies that were reviewed back in September. We had posted those for public comment. We have not received any. And it is our recommendation that we move these policies forward for the second reading.
Any trustee questions? Do you?
Not on the second reading. Yep.
Trustee Meister.
So, we're not going to go through them? We're just general questions right now?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess I'm still not seeing the self-defense and the bullying, and it might just be me.
Are you talking on 3225, 5015?
25. 3225. I guess I just would imagine in there, you know, it says like, there's no bullying for any reason. And I guess I was just expecting to see like a definition of bullying does not include stuff that after investigation turned out to be self-defense or something, to comply with the statute is all I'm wondering about.
Yeah.
Did you find it, Trustee Mercer?
I didn't. I mean, there's a definition of bullying, but I don't see the, again, I thought we were responding to a statute that said we had to add self-defense. I guess I'm just not seeing that unless it's somewhere else, and that's all I'm asking.
Yeah. Um, I, I believe, uh, when legal counsel drafted, uh, this policy, 3225 is, was revised to reflect House Bill 450, and while it doesn't explicitly say, uh, in response to self-defense, that is a determination made by the administration when investigating, uh, an incident of bullying, harassment, intimidation, hazing. And, and what, and basically what that bill is saying is that if we determine that it was an act of self-defense, then the student could not be disciplined.
Trustee Vogel.
I think there was a policy that we reviewed at the last meeting that specifically addressed that, that said that the student could act in self-defense and they would not be held liable if they use physical force to defend themselves.
Yeah.
In response to bullying. So I think it's maybe what you're.
It, it's coming out in, in both of the policies. I think this one spent a little bit more time defining and, uh, establishing what is the procedure when there's believed to be an act of bullying, harassment, intimidation, hazing. Um, yeah.
Any other trustee questions on the policies listed? 'Cause this is a full-board motion to approve the revised policies as presented.
Could you just remind me of the timeline in terms of first reading, second reading, et cetera, just for a minute, so I know exactly where I am at this point on these?
Yeah, so, so we brought forward groups of policies. Uh, we had three separate groupings. Um, and we have, this is the second group, second reading, and so once approved, these will become the board policy.
Any other trustee questions? Is there a motion? Moved by Trustee F. Garris, second by Trustee Wake. Any comments by trustee? Alright, so any public comment on the agenda item? All those in favor for approving the second reading of the, um, policies below, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So now we'll move on to item B, which is Finance, Operation, and Maintenance, and the first one up is a Health Insurance Trust update. And this is information only.
And I feel like Billy Joe stole my thunder. I thought everybody was here for this part of the agenda. It was riveting stuff. Um, House Bill 332 established, uh, a mechanism for school districts to form a health insurance trust. Currently, health insurance for public school employees do not fall under the state of Montana's plan or any other plan. They are basically set, uh, out to provide insurance for their employees in any manner they see fit. Um, there are districts like MCPS that are self-funded, meaning that we contribute a proportion of the, uh, plan costs directly out of the general fund for, from MCPS, and then employees also contribute a portion out of their paycheck to, uh, be a part of the, uh, insurance. So that's a self-funded, uh, trust. There are 17 districts in Montana that are self-funded, uh, with a, generally with about a, a 40, $41 million reserve balance between those 17 districts. We're not in connection with any, with each other. Um, and MCPS has about 15 million of that, uh, in reserves between the elementary and high school district, which I think is really a source of pride for, uh, running a self-funded insurance, uh, program. Uh, there's another organization in Montana called MUST, um, and MUST is run out of Helena, uh, and basically it is a, a pool of school districts who come together, uh, trying to pool their resources to also have health insurance. And, um, this bill that was passed basically said the state legislature will cede $40 million of reserve into this trust, providing it meets certain qualifications. Two of the biggest qualifications are that you have to have at least 12,000 employee lives represented in the trust, and you have to have a minimum of, uh, 150 districts. So, and there can only be one trust in Montana of this type. Uh, and, um, the double-A districts represent about 10,000, uh, employee lives. Belgrade is the only one that currently belongs to MUST. Uh, the rest of us are in self-funded programs, uh, but MUST has, uh, represents over 150 districts, uh, and somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000 employee lives. So, in order for this to work, MUST and the double As have to come together to figure out a way to, to make this work. Um, we have a, you know, we believe that we have a responsibility to do due diligence. This is an opportunity provided by the legislature. Um, we are always looking for ways that we can reduce, uh, healthcare costs, give better benefits, uh, provide, uh, health insurance for our employees and their, uh, dependents, um, without having to continue to expend larger and larger sums out of the general fund or shifting that burden to our employees. Um, we believe that, uh, this is something that is in our best interest, and the board, uh, back in August approved, uh, the, uh, inter-local agreement or cooperative agreement with the other double-A school districts. We seeded, uh, between the double-A districts about $50,000, uh, into the, uh, into this, uh, group that would explore whether or not, uh, this is something that we could do. Um, and it's a heavy lift. Uh, we've been working uh, quite a bit, uh, in conjunction with the other double-A districts. Um, MUST secured a, uh, third-party, uh, vendor that, uh, is helping to, um, for lack of a better word, um, guide them, uh, in the formation of this trust. Uh, and the double-A districts were invited to be a part of it. There was a trustee from Great Falls, there was a teacher from Billings, there were some double-A superintendents, some business clerks who all kind of met, uh, as a group with, uh, the MUST board. Uh, that also includes the MFPE president, Amanda Curtis, SAM director, Rob Watson, uh, MTSBA director, uh, Lance Melton. At the conclusion of that meeting, um, the double-A districts essentially said, "We think we want to ask our own consultant," and that's where the $50,000 came in, is that we wanted to put out an RFP for, uh, another consultant to come in and take a look at it. We were concerned that this trust that was being analyzed, uh, by Alliant and MUST was just going to be MUST 2.0, uh, which was something that we have concerns about when we've been running fairly successful, um, self-funded programs. Uh, and when I say "we," uh, Pat obviously has been a big part of this, Trevor's been a part of this, uh, we've involved our insurance, uh, committee, um, and they've been gracious to, uh, say, "Yes, let's expend these funds, let's really look at this," through an altruistic lens of, "Are we in a, in a place where we can come together, uh, across Montana to have better health insurance for our members?" Um, and so, uh, we actually, uh, enlisted the help of Marilyn Bartlett, who, uh, if you don't know Marilyn, um, her, well, her biggest claim to fame was she was ranked as the 13th most influential person by Fortune Magazine. Um, and she is a CPA, and she ran the state of Montana's, uh, Health Insurance Trust, uh, in plan and program. So widely regarded, um, and has been, uh, providing, um, consultation services to us at no cost. Uh, so the double-A districts right now have, uh, put out an RFP. We have three respondents. Um, each double-A district will have one representative to review the RFPs. Um, we're hoping to do that, uh, next week. We seem, it's really hard to get eight, uh, different people together from across the state, um, uh, all with the same calendar and availability. And, um, once we've completed that step, the RFP will actually, who we choose is going to do the feasibility study. They're going to look at planned data and uh, look at the double As. We have a large number of employee lives, and they're gonna make some recommendations on what they think of possible structure, what a governance structure, uh, and what that could look like. And then from there, we would issue another RFP for someone to actually help us build that. Um, it seems like, uh, we've spun our wheels a little bit, but there's been a lot of work going on, uh, kind of behind the scenes. I just wanted the board, uh, to be aware and updated on the progress that we're making. Uh, we have essentially two and a half years to get this off the ground. Uh, and when we talk with Marilyn, she says, "Ooh, that's a, that's a really lofty goal," uh, but she thinks it can be done. So, um, that's the update, and I'd answer any questions if there were any.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Mercer?
So somewhere down the line, you will make a recommendation to join this or not join it?
Correct.
And that's when we will actually decide and discuss the merits and what this actually gets us versus continuing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other trustee questions? Seeing none, any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. Alright, so now we'll move on to 10, which is. What is 10? Old Business, New Business?
New Business.
New Business. Sorry, I have a big staple right on it. So now we're on to item A, which is Finance, Operation, and Maintenance, and up is Innovative Educational Program Tax Credit, and this is over to Mr. McHugh.
Alright, thank you. So this is, uh, next year will be the third year of the tax credit, um, that was developed through the legislature. Um, this is a dollar-for-dollar credit for those that participate, and, uh, there's information on page 69 of the board packet, so you can see what, uh, the, the, um, tax credit entails. But essentially, the legislature last year allowed $2 million to be contributed in support of innovation programs in schools, so donations to public schools, up to a, a max of a $200,000 donation per donor. And, uh, um, that second year of the credit was, uh, the statewide, we hit that cap, that maximum. And, uh, we just learned through the Department of Revenue that amount has gone up to 5 million for 2024. And again, this is a dollar-for-dollar tax credit, so it's a pretty significant value to folks that are paying significant state taxes. Um, the intent of this, uh, agenda item is to get, uh, approval from the board to authorize the supras designated to, to get into the donation portal and to, uh, to accept and record those donations. So we have to make those donations and record them before January 15th. Um, and, uh, this, this coming year, um, we have a, a plan of action to try and get the word out in a little bit broader scope. Um, so, uh, we'll be sharing some brochures with, with, uh, with, uh, tax preparers and, uh, tax and estate planners and community organizations that we'll talk to about the availability of this tax credit. Um, you've probably heard, um, the last couple of years, um, there's only been a few schools that have participated, but last couple of years, Big Sky K-12 School District over by, uh, Big Sky Resort has, has sort of cleaned up in terms of those donations. Um, and last year is seven donors and a total of almost $900,000. So there are some serious taxpayers in that part of the, of the state. Um, at any rates, we'll, uh, if you look on the, the website, you'll see some additional information about the innovative tax credit and the program. Department of Revenue has some great information on their website. Um, and, uh, be on the lookout as we sort of, uh, get the word out and start communicating to groups. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions? Trustee Mercer.
So as I recollect, at the first two times you tried this, and I was there on morning one, um, you were trying to secure a piece of the credit before accepting the donation. As I'm reading this form, this time we're asking people to make a donation and they might or might not get a 100% offset. Is there any way, can we like, can we conditionally, not that I, I just wonder if we'd get more donations if we were willing to say, "And if you don't get it, we'll, we'll offer it back. You don't have to take it back." But I just, I, I, 100% or not is a big swing.
That's what we've been doing. That's what we've communicated. We already have one donor, one donation for next year. And, uh, and I, I know that what they communicate or what they reference is still the ability to take a, um, a donation subject to the 2% threshold, but, um, there's a huge difference between a tax credit and a, as Keegan knows, a subject to the 2% charitable gift. So that's the approach we're taking. And, um, we'd like to have donations in hand, and we'll hold on to those in a safe, in advance of that, uh, opening of the portal. Um, last year, um, unlike the first year where it was like Taylor Swift concert tickets, last year, um, there was, there was, uh, there was gap in the credit, the availability of the credit, so, um, and more opportunity to spend donations. So anticipate with 5 million that's available, there'll be even a greater opportunity to, to take advantage of the credit.
Trustee Mercer.
So, so we will offer it back? So the form says I'm not guaranteed a dollar-for-dollar credit on my taxes. I guess I would initially read that to mean, "I may or may not get this and you're keeping the money." Are you, are we offering the money back if they don't get it?
If they don't get the credit, we will, yes, that's correct. And, uh, the, it's possible that you can make a donation and your donation exceeds the available credit, so you're not gonna take advantage of the full donation or the full credit, in which case, which case, I think that's what's intended by that, that message. Not that we will take your, your donation regardless of the availability of the credit, but if, if that credit statewide is maxed, then, um, we'll use as much of your donation that can be counted as a credit, uh, and, and return the residual. Big difference between the credit and the deduction.
And I would just add to that, um, that it's a, it's a horse race. Um, you have your, your donation sitting here and you are allowed five people to get onto this portal, and you enter in all the data that they require as fast as you can, hoping that there's money left, that there's a place to donate to. And we, part of the reason why we're saying we can't guarantee it is because we aren't sure that, one, that the 5 million isn't going to be reached before we get the actual donation in there or some portion of that. But we may, it, we just, I can tell you a past experience, we got four donations in and we had 23 sitting there, and it was gone. Um, so we're hopeful that we'll have a little bit more time with that $5 million cap, but when Big Sky can grab 900,000 of it, it, it was just a challenge.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to that. As you said, the first year, one school, one district got 800,000 and the money was gone in eight minutes. Last year, I think it was like a day that it, before it disappeared. Hopefully this time it'll be a couple days, but yeah.
I guess I just would encourage us to be very clear, because if what you're saying is we'll give the money back, then anyone in this town has zero reason not to give us a check for their full state income tax, 'cause either they're gonna get a 100% offset or we will give them the money back. Right? Like, if that's what we're saying, I think we should be loud and clear that that's how good this deal, this weird legislation is.
I'll be around with pledge cards after the meeting.
Any other trustee questions? Alright, seeing none. This is a full-board motion. Is there a motion on the table? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews for the recommendation, second by Trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? I have a comment. I just wanna wish you good luck, Pat and Micah. Any public comment on this agenda item? All trustees in favor of the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now we'll move on to B, Personnel Negotiations and Policy, and we have two, um, personnel reports. We'll do it elementary and a high school, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to Trevor for the introduction of it.
Thank you. It's pretty routine for this time of year.
Any trustee questions? So first up is the Elementary Motion. Is there a motion to approve the Elementary Personnel Report? Moved by Trustee F. Garris, second by Trustee Witcher. Any trustee comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. And now we're on to the High School. Is there a High School motion? Moved by Trustee Wake for the recommendation, second by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any final comments? Any public comment? All those in favor for approving? All those in favor for approving the high school personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now we're moving on to approve the stipend for early notification of retirement. And this is back over to you, Trevor.
Thank you. Yes, this is also typical this, this time of year. This is meant to encourage folks who know they're going to retire to, to notify us so that we can add that to our appropriate personnel decisions for the remainder of the school year.
And this is a full board motion. Are there any questions for trustee Witt?
Is this amount the same as it has been, or did it change?
It's the same as last year. And as is the date.
Trustee F. Garris?
When I first got on the board, it was 500. And I think last year is the first year we went to 750. Did we see any difference? I'm, you know, going up 50%?
I don't think we saw any difference in the, in the numbers. And I can't really speak to whether or not it makes a difference to the individual. I can tell you, though, that we've talked about moving that date and changing the amount. And it really comes down to moving the date. Retirement's a big decision for folks, and there's a lot to figure out. And that winter break is really key in having time at home to think about things, to call TRS. And so more, it's about being respectful to folks and, and keeping that date. And that amount of money for right now seems appropriate. It's something that we discussed with the union.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, is there a motion? Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee F. Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment on an agenda item? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now we'll move on to topic three, which is to approve freshman football coach stipends. And this is back to you.
Thank you. You actually may have seen this in the past. There are three negotiated stipends for, for football. There's a head coach, assistant coach, and a freshman coach. The freshman coach is the lowest. And when that was negotiated, it was because the freshman team did not travel. When, in years when they do travel, that amount has been equated to the assistant coach. So this was a year when, when we started, we had already approved the stipends for, for this school year, and then they ended up traveling. So we're trying to rectify the situation again in conversations with the union and those individual coaches.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Mercer?
If we didn't do this, would we not have freshman football coaches?
You might have a hard time hiring, you know, when we had this posted, the idea was that they would not be traveling, and they signed up for a certain stipend. So they might have signed up for an assistant coach had they known, known that they'd be traveling and have the same level of responsibility. And in fact, the season's already over. So we're, we're trying to go back and rectify some things. These are, these are things that we work out with the union that, that we just have to equalize.
Trustee Mercer?
So are you saying, essentially, we're trying to uphold our good faith, what we had said? This isn't necessarily a from-scratch negotiation. This is making right on what we'd previously more or less promised?
Correct. Similar to an MOU.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, this is a high school board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Wallach. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So now we'll move on to topic four, which is to approve the out-of-country field trip requests. And this is over to Assistant Superintendent Shattuck.
Hi, thank you. We have three out-of-country travel requests, and I invite Erin Smith from Big Sky to come on up and talk about the trip to Canada.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Erin Smith. I teach French and history at Big Sky High School. As we all know, educational travel is really important. And any opportunity to provide that to students or to offer that opportunity just really helps to promote understanding and, and provide firsthand experiences to lessons that they learn in the classroom. I work closely with the IB program in both history and French education, and I have a really great group of students who are looking forward to hopefully planning this trip to Quebec in Montreal. It will take place over spring break this March. We will spend three days in Quebec, two nights, two days in Montreal. And it is a cultural, historical, and language-focused trip. So a lot of history, learning about the region, learning about native indigenous cultures, and a lot of opportunities for students to practice their language, which is really the priority of the trip for us in the French program. There are French students, speaking students that want to take advantage of this opportunity. And so I'm working with, or I was recommended by colleagues who have done this before, through Explorica, which is the organization that organizes the trip and provides exceptional service. You know, they have a fabulous, thorough safety protocol. The tour directors that are with us, you know, really provide everything we need in case of emergency. I've adapted their safety protocols to meet the needs of our students already, the ones that are interested in, in the trip. Our itinerary is, is quite thorough, so I'm not going to go through the whole thing. But it seems like a really awesome opportunity for our students. And does anyone have any questions?
Any trustee questions?
Okay, awesome. I'm not sure if you want to, on each of the trips or at the end?
No, we'll do one motion for to approve all of them, all three.
Great, great. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
So I also have Kristy Rothie coming up. She has two trips planned, one for this year and next year, Costa Rica and Italy.
Hello, thank you. So this past year, or back in June of this last year, I took students to, to an agriculture in Ireland trip. By far, that was the best trip I've ever taken with students. It was exceptional. And I'm really looking forward into making global travel and exploring agriculture across the world, a yearly thing for our agricultural students and all students in MCPS. So this next year, I'm proposing a discovery in Costa Rica trip. This is going to explore ecosystems and natural resources in Costa Rica. We're also going to be touring a coffee and cacao plantation. So that's going to be here in the summer or the June of 2024. And then in the, in the summer, June of 2025, I would like to take my students on a sustainable farming in northern Italy tour. So those are the two trips that I would like to have approved.
Any trustee questions? CNN? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the three out-of-country travel requests? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? Trustee Witt?
I love these trips. I'm so excited that people get to go on these and get a chance to learn in a different country. So always supportive of these types of requests.
Trustee Mercer?
I guess, and just to clarify, in case anyone's wondering, I mean, these are not, these are essentially private trips without cost to the district, right? We're approving this because students are leaving the district, not because of any financial.
Yep, out of country, yep. Trustee Wake?
It used to be that we had reports back when people, students took trips like this. I was wondering if maybe your students wouldn't mind making a report back when they come back from their ventures. I think we'd all be interested.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Vice Chair Walker?
Yeah, I saw that, at least in one of them, it talked about students paying for it and crowdfunding and fundraisers of various sorts. But are there any kinds of, of scholarships for students to do this at all?
Yes, EF Tours puts on a $1,000 global scholarship, and we did receive one of those last year. And I did encourage all my students to apply for it again this year. And also, there are some other grants that do give students scholarships for these types of programs. So there are some that are available.
All right. So... Did we vote? We didn't vote. No. Do we have any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And so now we'll move on to five, which is to approve the grant application. And this is with Barbara Frank.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I do have a slight change to the grant application summary that was in your board packet. We've actually reduced the amount of the grant that we'll be asking for and shifted part of the cost to a separate grant that we are applying for as well. This grant is, the new amount would be $47,680. It would be to the, it's going to the Otto Bremer Trust and would fund the Kids in Transition Kindergarten Program at Lowell and Franklin. Under the new House Bill 352 legislation, we get .25 AMB for students participating in a jumpstart program. But as we know, with AMB, that funding comes in arrears. So this would allow us to get the jumpstart program off the ground at two schools this summer. This grant would fund the staff. And the other grant that you've already approved is our community schools grant, and we had actually written the materials into that grant. And we're expecting a word on that grant in the next few weeks. So this would provide the staffing and support for the Kids in Transition Program. The really cool thing about this program is it is out of Oregon. It's a research-based program that shows significant improvement for students over multiple years that participate. It also includes a parent education component, so it's, it targets at-risk students and includes specific instruction and programming for parents to help them prepare for kindergarten.
Any trustee questions? Trustee?
So there's a specific amount of time written into the bill. I believe we have to have four weeks. I want to say 120 hours of instruction. So it'll be probably a four to six-week program. I know in Oregon, they often run it as eight-week programs. So we'll be looking at our school calendar and figuring out where to fit that in right before kindergarten starts.
Any other trustee questions? Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
Just could you repeat what the number is that you changed to?
Yep, the new amount is 47,680.
Trustee Mercer?
And so then, and then, so this is year one, and then year two, you, you think will be funded by AMB money?
Yep.
And then we're good?
Each student that participates in a jumpstart program will get an extra .25 AMB attached to their, the one AMB that we get for that student. But of course, it's in arrears.
Any other trustee questions? This is an elementary board motion. Is there a motion on the table? Moved by trustee Mercer, second by trustee F. Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? All elementary trustees in favor of the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trust, elementary trustees present. Thank you, Barbara. And now we'll move on to topic six, which is boys' high school baseball. And this is over to Superintendent Micah Hill.
Thank you. I'm going to take a quick drink before I start talking. All right. We have a little presentation to go along with the, the conversation. And as I was kind of contemplating this, I thought, you know, wouldn't it be great if we had maybe like, Take Me Out To The Ball Game plays when it first comes up, or the Oregon, you know, in the seventh inning stretch, or, you know, things like that. And, but I want to start with some acknowledgements. And those acknowledgements largely reflect people in this room who have put in a lot of time and energy, love into this discussion and, and asking for the board to consider it. And so, and that's just a really sincere acknowledgement. There's a lot of widespread support for baseball in Missoula, from our Pee-wee and Little League teams, of which I understand is very strong, also for the Legion teams, the Mavericks. And there are countless parents and coaches and volunteers and, and people who have invested a lot of time and energy into this. So I just want to acknowledge that, that there's a passion there and that there's advocacy for this. And just also an acknowledgement that there's been a lot of homework done. In the packet, you'll see that there is a submission in public comment of the startup kickoff plan that was presented. I know that there were a group of employees in the district last year who spent some time kind of studying this and putting together some information for trustees to consider from a budget standpoint. And then, you know, this conversation has continued into this year. From literally day one, had a meeting in July with a couple of community members who wanted to talk about baseball for Missoula. I'm going to share a little bit about some of the things that we've heard and just try and recap, you know, some of the things that our proponents are telling us, that we know that participation in activities, regardless of the activity, we have better engagement, students have better GPA, they have better attendance rates, higher graduation rates. And baseball may be one of those activities that helps us to that end. It teaches life skill. It teaches discipline. It teaches teamwork. It teaches perseverance. It teaches kids to work together, to overcome adversity. And if approved, weather will be one of those in March. Students grow up playing Little League before high school, and there is a belief that those opportunities diminish as they get older. It becomes more and more competitive. There, it becomes a cut sport. And that there's a concern that without high school baseball, that would continue. I think it's also important to note that it's, you know, it's an inclusive sport. It, it caters to a variety of abilities. You don't have to be 6'4", and you don't have to be super fast, you know. And so there's a lot of things that, that students can benefit from. You do have to be able to throw and catch pretty well, though, I understand. You know, baseball as a community sport, you know, it's one more thing for our community to engage in. You think about, you know, college activities and high school activities. And we hear our, our student reps talk about all the amazing things that are going on in their schools in a variety of different levels. And, and that's something that I think as a community, as schools, as, as a leader, we value those things without question. We always want to provide opportunities for our students. And then, you know, there's a potential for opening doors to, to scholarships and maybe other opportunities beyond high school. Whether that bears true or not remains to be seen, but that is, is one of the things. And then there's a, an issue of cost. Students have to fundraise. They have to maybe pay some out-of-pocket expenses. I've heard both sides of that. And, and I bring up those points, and, and I put there kind of at the bottom of that slide, that I wouldn't argue any of them. In fact, I think if my teacher had given me assignment to come in prepared to argue both sides of this argument, I could win both sides. So it's put us in a, in a tough spot. Continuing some of those acknowledgements and, and some of the things that the, these groups have brought forward, and I talked about these, but I, I think we understand the merits. I think we understand that we want to partner with our community. And I, I think that as a board, this isn't really a philosophical discussion. I don't, I haven't heard anything from a trustee or a parent or anyone else who says, you know, fundamentally, we should not add this because it, it's bad for kids, or it, it creates an undue burden on people. So I want that to be acknowledged as well. But there are some challenges to consider. And some of those that we have talked about, cost. Adding baseball requires significant costs, and I'll get into that here in a little bit. And for a variety of things, just like all of our other activity programs. With limited budgets, adding baseball may mean that we have to make cuts to other sports, and in particular, male sports, because this can become a Title IX issue. There's a potential that it'd be a cut sport. If enough students are interested and, and the demand is really out there, just like basketball or other things, and that can be potentially divisive as well. And then space facilities. MCPS does not have baseball facilities at the present. And this could create some challenges for us into the future, especially when looked at through an equity lens. Oh, wait, you have a softball field at Big Sky High School? I think we need to have a baseball field at this, Big Sky High School. Where are we going to come up with the money to build that if that becomes the issue? So there are some things in here that I think really need to be discussed. Equity is another one of those. I've spent a lot of time... I've spent a lot of time with legal counsel, with MTSB, or MHSA, talking about equity and things that we have to consider, even if we allow baseball in its initial year, inaugural year, to fundraise. There's also sustainability. You know, we have an eager group of people who are saying, "Yes to baseball, please, we will get this done, we will help it get off the ground." But then we have to look to the long term with finances. And is there enough interest for participation? Some of the facts. The Montana High School Association approved the addition of baseball two years ago. Its inaugural season was last year. There were twenty-five schools with twenty-one teams that participated, and it's considered an all-class event, meaning that we don't separate out by double-A, A, B, or C. There were two double-A high schools out of the sixteen that are presently in the double-A league. That was Butte and Belgrade. Both districts only have one school. So for a district like Missoula with three schools, Billings with three schools, Helena two, you get the idea. Most of the double-A districts, and I've talked with superintendents about this, cite budget and facilities as their biggest obstacle to approving baseball in their facilities or in their communities. And right now, there are no other double-A high schools that are planning to add baseball for the twenty-three and twenty-four school year. I did talk with the director of MHSA, Brian Michelotti, today. He said there are three other schools that he knows of that are considering adding it: Big Fork, Ronan, and Park, which would be Livingston. So three more Class A schools looking to potentially join the ranks. Talk a little bit about costs. We've seen some expenditure reports from some of our community partners that have been looking at this. We've reviewed it, we've reviewed actual expenditure reports for Butte and their baseball program last year. We've looked at our actual expenditure reports for softball, which would be a comparable sport, just from a travel, game, postseason-type of standpoint. And I don't think there's really any disagreement that it's, it would cost roughly fifty thousand dollars per school to start up baseball in MCPS. And then you have ongoing costs. That hundred-and-fifty thousand doesn't reflect potential cost for facilities. Our community group has done a lot of legwork and talked with the city on rental rates and different things, and they've put together some projections. So I've included that at that four-to-five thousand dollar range. But I also saw an expenditure report from Frenchtown, Whitefish, a couple other schools where they were having to pay for an extra thousand dollars of granite to add to the base for the infield and some other costs that they weren't necessarily expecting. Some of them have their own facilities, a lot of them don't. So that's roughly what we're talking about, is about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to initially implement high school baseball in Missoula. Other considerations, I've mentioned that I've talked with MHSA, Title IX. They said, "If you allow this and you allow it to be fundraised, the district should strongly consider, what are you going to do for a female sport or sports?" In terms of, you're gonna allow a group to out and fundraise privately a hundred-and-fifty thousand, but there's no benefit from a Title IX perspective to the female sport. So the district has to be considering that as well. There's a proportionality issue. Right now, we offer one more female sport than male sport, which under Title IX is fine. We can do that. It's when you start adding more male sports than female sports, or you start to get out of proportionality with the number of students who are involved. Adding girls wrestling and only having two female wrestlers, and then adding three high school baseball teams with, you know, seventeen to thirty-four students, becomes a proportionality issue. Not that there's anything wrong or that we would be violating something if we added it, it's just something that we have to consider. I talked a little bit about equity. You know, those become real issues when people start pointing fingers and they want to get into someone else's sandbox, and, "Oh, they've got more than I got, so we need to make sure that those things are addressed." And then the last thing is concurrent season. Right now, the Montana High School Association, last year, had an MOU with American Legion that if American Legion was offered in your community, or high school baseball was offered in your community, your American Legion season could not run concurrently, meaning you can't have the Mavs and high school baseball going on at the same time. So when I talk with other, or community people and coaches, that's problematic because they've already established that they have a season, they've already started to put together, and the wheels are in motion for building their schedule, they have a tournament scheduled, they've got some things to consider as well. So that was something that I previously was unaware of. Some of the other groups that I've sought input from, Legion Baseball, Coach Hathaway, who's sitting here with us tonight, have talked with them to try and get a better understanding, you know, why, you know, we've had some public comment on this, it's been brewing, but hadn't really heard from opposing viewpoints on whether or not this is a great idea. And you're probably gonna hear some things tonight that I don't think anybody in the room is opposed to baseball. They just have some concerns as we move forward. I put on here, Missoula Education Foundation, that was a, it's not the foundation, that is the association. So that is having conversations with union leadership, trying to understand what maybe some of their concerns would be, because they see it through a financial lens. This is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we would potentially be contributing to an activity where previously we hadn't, and so what isn't going to get funded? If budgets are tight, or if we're talking cuts, that's gonna be their concern. And I've talked with our high school admin. Putting a baseball season together in four months is a really heavy lift between hiring coaches, getting fields ready, building out a schedule, buying uniforms, all the equipment, all of those things. It's just, it's a heavy lift. And I know that we have great people in the audience that have said, "We are willing to step up and help and do these things," but that is really an administrative function and is not something that we would just turn over to the community to say, "Yeah, go ahead and kind of run this for us." That just doesn't happen. There's a lot of things that, and boxes that we have to check in order to be able to do that. So my next slide, I originally had titled optics, and I didn't feel like optics was the right word. It is a thoughtful and sensitive decision, and it's important. And I've taken a little bit of guff already tonight about my recommendation or lack of recommendation. And what I've proposed are some options for the board to consider. And I, and I will say that I've been very transparent with the community that has come to me and said, "We would like to have this." And there isn't a, necessarily a recommendation from me, but I've also been pretty vocal about saying, like, "I'm not sure that this is the right time, that I'm not sure that this is what we should be doing." My concerns come from Esser, which, you know, totally different checkbook. So I want to make that clear, that this isn't something that, you know, we're taking money from somewhere else to try and do this, but we have a significant loss of funding with Esser in the millions of dollars, and those are, those are people that are attached to that. And so even though it's a different pot of money, one of the things that you are potentially going to hear about is, "Well, if you had that money to spend, if you had a hundred-and-fifty thousand spent on baseball, why didn't you at least try and save one of those positions that was gonna get cut?" That's where this kind of comes to a head. And I think that it's just something that we have to be really cognizant of. And I don't think that it means that we can't add baseball, but it really is going to take a sensitive, thoughtful approach, and we need to consider the decision carefully. So I put together four options. I think Keegan said he could come up with seven or eight more. Was that right? Something like that. And, and again, this is for the board to discuss, and I want to help guide that discussion. I have some of my staff here who also could help with some of that. But one option to consider was just not to offer baseball as a high school activity. It's an option. Delay the start of high school baseball until 2025, meaning that this board could give approval, yes, but, Micah, we're gonna give you some direction, that we need you to do a little more work, we need a little more information, we need to give you time to successfully get this off the ground. Also to consider that we may need to make this budget neutral, which becomes kind of an option, inside of option two, that is something I think for the board could consider. Option three is to approve it for 2024, but we would have to use current one-time-only funds, meaning our inter-local agreement, to pay for it and then direct us to make it budget neutral. And by budget neutral, what that means is, we expend a certain amount of money on activities. If you want to know, we've run the numbers, it's about three-point-seven million dollars is our annual expenditures for activities. That includes coaches' salaries, that includes administration, that includes transportation, that includes supplies, that includes officials, that includes everything under the sun. When we ran the numbers, the interesting thing is, is that thirty percent of that, or about one-point-three million, is fundraised or is gate receipts. So we're already doing an incredible amount of fundraising to support our activities. Our community is incredibly generous to our students and our activities, and if any of you have kids and activities, you probably have felt that pinch. Yeah. So, but budget neutral means that we would have to pull from other activities in order to make that happen, and it has to be male activities. We can't pull from a female activity to add a male sport. So when we say, you know, when you look at it and you say, "Well, we're already fundraising thirty percent of the cost of an activity on average across Missoula County Public Schools," what does that pull away from those activities? Is that travel? Certainly something to consider. And even in tight budget times, we might say, "We're not doing charter buses anymore. You're gonna ride a yellow bus to that activity." And that's because it costs us three times as much to put kids on a charter bus as it does to send them on a yellow bus. You can get there in the Volkswagen, but you can get there in the Cadillac. But that is one area that we could look at, is potentially creating budget neutral. But if we're gonna take away from their supply budget, or we're gonna take from other things where we expend general fund dollars, and there's some things that won't change in it. Coaches' salaries aren't gonna change, we're not gonna pull back on those, we're not gonna pull back on the retirement fund that we have to pay into, we're not gonna pull back on work comp. So there's some fixed costs. So it starts to become a really narrow set of values that you look at, whether it's supplies like balls, or, you know, miscellaneous equipment, maybe new uniform purchases, you know, whatever it may be. So just something else to consider from a budget-neutral standpoint. The other, and this one has been widely promoted, is to approve high school baseball for 2024 and require that the entire first year be fundraised, and they would have to have fundraising milestones. And I know that the group, a lot of the group out here in the audience tonight is really anxious to know, because if they have to fundraise a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's a heavy lift for them as well. And to get some of those milestones put in place, we would have to start talking initially about what are the costs just for personnel, so we can get a coach hired, so that we can start ordering equipment, so that we can start building schedules, so that, and so we, you know, when you're looking at this, this is a four-month, we have four months to pull this off, from today until basically baseball season starts. And then look to add baseball to the general fund in 2025.
Questions? Trustee Witt, then trustee Witcher.
Oh, you're gonna have a long night. I decided, despite being an accountant, not to ask a question about numbers first. Can you talk about Ridgway a little bit and what that is in comparison to Title IX, and what types of things we need to do to comply with Ridgway along with Title IX?
Yeah, I think some of the things that I talked about with regard to proportionality and making sure that you've expended some funds in support of girls' activities as well, if you add baseball, is what Ridgway is really talking about, that you, that it's not just a, an apples-to-apples comparison, that you have to have the exact same number of sports, and that you have to have everything exactly the same. It means that you have to have demonstrated that you're actively working to support female activities.
Oh, your mic's not on. Hey. First of all, I'm incredibly overwhelmed by the public support for this. You know, I never like to, I always like to acknowledge the hard work of parents and athletes looking to, you know, make life better for their kids. It's really, it's what makes community strong. I do have a couple of questions, though. So if we go with option four, and they fundraise for the entire first year, and then that means in 2025, we're adding it to our general fund, which means that we're actually doing option number three, making it budget-neutral in 2025? And when we make things budget-neutral, what I want to understand is what the heck can we cut? And I know you talked about transportation, but I reckon it's hard for me to make decisions until I know what balls are gonna be taken away from the football team. Like, is it actually realistic to cut anything that we currently have? What can we cut?
Well, I think, well, I mentioned transportation. I think that's definitely something that we can look at. But when we sit down and kind of do a line-by-line analysis of what our expenditures are and where programs are, and, I mean, it's, I think, whatever we cut, or we say we're going to cut, let's just say, "Hey, we're gonna get, I'm gonna direct all the activity directors, you need to cut twenty percent out of your budgets in order to support baseball." They're gonna have to sit down and figure out, "Okay, what can we do without? And if we can't do without it, what are we going to ask our families to fundraise?" So an example that's coming up recently is the city's asking us to pay a share of the renovation to tennis field, tennis courts, twenty tennis courts. They've calculated out, here's your hourly rate, here's your preferred rental, and then it, we also need two-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars out of you. So for the next twelve years, we're being asked, we're gonna ask our tennis players to fundraise an additional sixty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to play tennis on the city courts. I don't know what, I don't know what I would cut out of tennis. I mean, they get balls. Maybe, maybe a net if they have to replace that, but there's not a whole lot. There's travel, there's coaches. So there's not, there's just not a lot to tap into.
I have another question, and this is probably a dumb question, but I'm sure others likely. Is there a reason why we have to have a team for each high school?
Yes. Yeah, we've asked that question when you are allocating budgets, when you are making sure that there is parity between schools, when you are offering it as a district, you don't get to pick and choose, we're gonna offer this at this school and not this at another school. It's either all or nothing.
Trustee F. Gers.
So, Micah, when I have a contractor come into my house and I want to redo my kitchen, and he gives me a bid that says, and it's gonna be about fifty grand, the first thing that goes in my mind is, "It's not gonna be fifty grand." So do we have something more exact than approximately fifty grand per school?
Yeah, we do, but it varies. And so as an example, when I looked at Butte's expenditures, their actual expenditures were forty-two thousand-something, I could, I could find the document. But they also hosted the state tournament, so there was no state travel that they had to pay for. They canceled a trip to Sydney, which would've cost them about five grand just for one, one baseball doubleheader. And then their uniforms were donated, which were twelve thousand dollars. When we look at the expenditures between each individual school for softball in Missoula, it's all a little bit different. They might have different needs, like this year, Big Sky might need uniforms, and next year, it might be Hellgate. So it can, there's gonna be some fluctuation, but, you know, between the work that the community group did, the work that we've done, the group that the, that was convened last year to do this research, that's right, it's right in where we're sitting. The biggest, the biggest one is just field and facility, you know, in terms of what it would cost to actually do that, but... And I thought maybe you were gonna say, "We're not doing granite countertops," or something. So you had me going.
Trustee Mercer, and then trustee Witt.
So I guess I'm confused. Is the, is the hundred-and-fifty the startup or the ongoing? What does the softball cost a year? Like, what's the ongoing next year?
Yeah, the ongoing would put it probably in around the hundred-and-thirty to hundred-and-forty range, but it also depends on postseason travel. You know, if all three teams qualify for the state tournament and it's in Billings, then that's an expense that you just, you can't write into the budget. You might budget for it, but we may not actually have the funds to do it.
So we say a hundred-and-fifty thousand, three schools. I seem like I might be missing something here. Sealy? What, if we, what, what goes on with Sealy?
Yeah, if Sealy had said they wanted to, to do it, we would be talking about Sealy as well.
So they just didn't put forth anything saying, "We want to"? What, what is the potential? What, what is the potential of that?
I haven't heard anything about potential for that from Sealy.
Trustee Mercer.
So I'll just push back a little bit. You said these were different checkbooks from the Essar. I get they're different than Essar, but when Essar stops, we're going to fund those positions out of general and interlocal. That is the same checkbook, right? I mean, we're talking general fund.
Yeah, you're talking general fund.
And so, like, we might be looking, whatever this could be cut from transportation, if this conversation wasn't happening, we might be saying, cut that to save this teaching position, right? I mean, these are not, no?
So I can answer that?
Go ahead.
I will. So we have two transportation budgets. We have our transportation budget, and then we have transportation within activities, which is in our general budget. What Mike is talking about is transportation, which, inside the general budget with activities. Did I say that right, Pat?
Yep.
Wait, so, so, but it's a general fund budget? So if we save money on it, can't we use it for a teacher? Okay.
Trustee Witt.
All right, now it's time to put Pat on the spot. Where are we at on the current year budget for high school? What, what are we looking at? Did we get it to pretty much zero? And how much Essar are we using? And then next year?
And you're talking overall?
Yeah, general fund more, because I, like, I don't, I'm not concerned.
Yeah, of course, part of it depends upon negotiations and what that looks like, but we're counting on using, and this is just off the cuff a little bit, but using about a million two of Essar next year to, or this year rather, to support the high school and about 400 on the elementary side, which needs to be built into the budget. And so when we looked at just our estimates for FY '25, our high school with an overbase levy was down, and I want to say 800,000 on the elementary side, we were down over a million. But they're both in the negative, and that assumes a 1% increase.
So follow-up, 1% increase, because I'm thinking about, we're on the, we're in the union negotiation year, right? So we don't have a contract with them for next year. And so you're assuming that we're increasing the union contract by 1% too? Or what? Because that's the biggest part of our budget, is these unions.
Right.
What, what is our assumption right now?
Yeah, it's estimating rather than assuming. So I'm, for, for purposes of the, the, the projections, we're estimating a 1% increase, which I'm not sure what that totals at the moment, but I'll look it up. But with that 1% increase, then we're in the negative to that degree.
And so if we negotiate further with them and say, well, because I can think about the union saying inflation is X percent state budget that we got from the legislature gave us a 3% increase, if, so if we end up with a 2.5% increase from union negotiations, we are, any idea how much more negative? Quite a bit?
Yeah, you're going to be, it, it depends, some of the union groups we negotiate in dollars and cents rather than percentages, but you're going to be, you know, close to a million dollars each percent, and with a comparable amount on the hourly side in total.
Before trustee Mercer, any of the other trustees before, who have not spoken yet? Still thinking. Trustee Mercer.
I'll stall for you. So Pat, what was, but what was the, the teacher increase last time? Wasn't it like four or something?
No, it was 1.75.
Okay. Per year?
Yes, and part of the increase of all steps, so that's right. So you're looking at two different pieces, but...
Trustee Witcher.
So I see in, in laying out these options, because I think that I firmly understand that we have no funding, we don't have the funding that we need right now to operate, period, because we're weaning off of Essar. That is blatantly clear. It's also clear that the same money that goes to teachers goes to sports and activities and that sort of stuff. We're all in the same pot. I understand that. Is there an option five that says they're going to provide the money for 2024, and then for 2025, for 2026? Is that a definite no-go? Can't fundraise multiple years?
Yeah, that would be a definite no-go. And that, that's where you get into kind of that Ridgway and that equity piece, is that you can't require one team or one specific sport to permanently fundraise when you're going to provide non, a different option for other sports.
Trustee Mercer.
Because there's no, so I guess I came up from when soccer was coming into varsity sports, and so we didn't have buses to start, and, you know, whatever. It was like, I don't know if our coaches were paid, it was kind of this interim period that went on for my whole high school career. But that was because there was both sides, and I guess I'm, so that question on the proportionality, I mean, you've hinted around it, but if what we're adding in offset of this is women's wrestling, does that meet the proportionality requirement, or do we fail it?
Yeah, in, in my conversation with MHSA, they said you, you need to be prepared to expend some, some dollars on female activity. It could be, we're going to buy all new volleyball standards and nets for all the high schools. I have no idea what that costs, might be $60,000. But they're saying you can't just, it gets complicated and tricky, but you can't just fundraise for a particular sport without, and make it only go to a male-dominated sport. You have to be able to show that you are making an effort to be equitable in how you're allocating funds.
Or we extend a similar offer to something else that's out there. Women's lacrosse, or swimming, or whatever it might be to...
Flag football?
Or flag football.
But which is going to cost more money.
Right, for sure.
That's the great, like...
For sure on that, no, but it, but it, on the proportionality, we have to. We either have to, okay.
Trustee Witt.
Ooh, please expand on your flag football. And is that a sanctioned sport in the state? Because we've had some discussions.
It is a sanctioned sport in the state through Montana High School Association. It will also be an Olympic sport. I know that the teams that currently have it have great participation numbers. It's relatively inexpensive and could be something worth considering.
Trustee Witt.
Sorry, I keep talking. Follow-up to that.
I don't have a PowerPoint.
You say relatively inexpensive. Wasn't there some sort of like grant, or some really wealthy guy that happens to love football that was trying to fund this?
Yeah, there's a gentleman named Arthur Banks, who owns the Atlanta Falcons, who is offering to pay for the first three years, 100% in the first year, 75% in the second, 50% in the third, to make it a go.
Quick question. When you said he's, he's offering, he's offering to us or to schools in the entire world?
Anybody in the state of Montana.
Why can't we find a baseball guy that would do the same?
I'm not that well-connected to baseball.
Or would that go against the rules, then, of being 100% funded outside of the district?
No, because it's a donation coming to the district for that purpose.
Can, this is, this is a totally separate question. So when you were talking about proportionality, you said that currently we have one more female sport than male sport, and that's okay. But it's not okay if we were to have one more male sport than female sport. How is, how is that okay for one, but not for the other?
Because Title IX and the Ridgway settlement were brought about to bring equalization. And even, like, when you apply the proportionality test, and we're just going to say, we'll, we'll use two sports. Football, which there might be 150 boys out for football at Sentinel, nine through 12. Volleyball, another sport being offered, is a cut sport, where we only have, where we only carry so many girls on the team at any given time. So unlimited participation for the boys, and we fund all of it, right? We buy everybody helmet, we buy everybody pads, we buy everybody, we have games, we have travel, we have all of that. And then on the volleyball side, you don't have the same thing. And so anything, and that's recognized. It wasn't that you had to, you know, make football a cut sport or anything like that. It was just that whenever you're considering adding male sports, you have to make sure that you're considering what the effect is on the female sport. And are you creating missed opportunities or denying opportunities to a group that, you know, when this was originally litigated and settled, you know, that was kind of the ruling that came out of that. So I can't speak for the, all the reasons why that is, but it is.
Trustee Witcher, then vice chair Walker Andrews.
I reckon I also look at what we're doing as a district to support non-athletes in the high schools and their activities and that sort of stuff, too. And I just want to at least give a little bit of voice to the funding for non-athletic pursuits and clubs and activities, and the funding that we're, we're allocating for those activities.
Yeah, I can tell you that we spend significant funds on band, orchestra, choir, theater, speech and debate. In fact, speech and debate is one of our most costly activities that we offer in MCPS due to the travel and the, and the way that tournaments are set up. So point taken, but when we review it, it's like, if you're spending as much money on your band as you are your football team, you're doing a pretty good job, doing a good job.
Yeah, this is, I know it's going to sound screwy. We were just talking about the innovation grants, where people can say, I want to give $5,000 to the schools rather than the state, you know, on my income tax, or whatever it is. And you were just saying that somebody could actually donate to flag football, and because it was a donation, that works. When people make these donations on the innovation grants, do they at all specify what they would be for?
They can, but the, the law actually stipulates what it's for. It's more for that advanced opportunity and innova, and transformational learning. It covers a wide variety of things. It could be for special education-related costs, and they can specify, or they can just generically say, I, I want to donate X amount, and you use it as you see fit.
So no one... It was not that I would suggest it, but nobody, but it would be very interesting if you could say, I want my entire donation to go to...
Supporting the arts. No, not, not the arts, or not, not sports, but you could say the arts, or technology, or special education, or something along those lines. Yep.
Trustee Mercer.
Three questions. So the, so the 3.7 million doesn't include art, speech and debate, none of that's in that? It does. The 3.7 is all activities?
All activities.
Okay. And what, do you have a rough percentage of it goes to male sports versus female sports?
I would say it's probably really equal in terms of, like, coaching stipends and...
Those are almost the same across...
Yeah, it varies from sport to sport and whether, what level you're at, head coach, assistant coach.
And so then, there was a question about option number four. I mean, I guess I'll show my cards a little bit. If people want to do something and they're going to pay for it, I have no desire to stand in the way of that whatsoever, I am unwilling, right now, today, I think, to commit us in perpetuity. And I, and that's partly just me of like, I think we should look at this. I think it's meaningful that no other schools are, big schools are doing that yet. I mean, I guess I would want us to look at it over. So I guess I'm fine if they can fundraise it for now. I don't think we have the money for it. I'm unwilling, I think, to commit right now and now for 2025. So can we, when you say look to add baseball to general fund, does that have to be a commitment to add baseball to general fund tonight? I can't do that, I don't think, but that's just me.
I think you just referenced one of the six options that Keegan was thinking of earlier. And that's, you know, the idea was, I wanted to get put at least four options in front of the board tonight to consider, but there may be some other ways to think about it. And I thought through the discussion that maybe the board could arrive at that.
Trustee Wallach, then district clerk McHugh.
I've been collecting my thoughts, and they're all mixed up now. So ultimately, if we vote for this, whether or not it's fundraised initially, it cannot be fundraised in perpetuity, and it's going to go into the general fund after likely the first year, for as long as we continue to offer it, correct?
Correct. What I would add to that is that, keeping in mind that most activities, on average, we're generating about 30% of the, the expenditures through fundraising activities. So it's not like 100% of the 150,000 is going to be coming directly from the general fund. You're probably looking at more like 70%, which, those are the things that, when you talk about, you know, coaches' salaries, the retirement fund, tran, you know, transportation, those kind of things, that's where a lot of that's going to go.
Right.
Also, facilities, would that be included in that, or is that separate?
Well, facilities is, again, it, it's a hard one to, to put like a definitive, I can tell you exactly, this is going to cost you, you know, $47,250.17. There's just, a, a game could get canceled, and you don't have to travel, or you don't make it to the state tournament. You're not, you know, those kind of things.
And then there was mention of, if we approve this due to Ridgway and everything else, we may have to also commit a similar increase to female or other sports. Is that something we definitely would have to commit to? Or, like, are we voting to increase two things here, really, by approving this one? Just to help me understand that.
Just in the, just in the initial year, not in perpetuity. It would just become part of the overall equalization of the expenditures as we move forward.
I just wanted to, to update my numbers. So the, Keegan's question had to do with our early estimates and the general fund budgets, and the elementary deficit's 800,000, and the high school deficit's 200,000. And this is after a 3% inflationary increase, and then both operating levies, elementary 167,000 and the high school 304,000. And then the 1% approximately a million dollars.
Any other trustee questions? Vice chair Walker Andrews.
You know, we've been talking almost exclusively about the equity issue and the money, but we also have that additional issue about the Legion baseball. So we have to figure out that as well.
Yeah, and I, I think that's part of why, in the recommendation, you see, it's not a no, but not yet. When I talk with MHSA, when I've talked with folks with the Legion, there, it's not that they aren't supportive. MHSA would actually say, we want to partner really well with Legion baseball. When we look at Washington and Oregon and the other states around us that have high school baseball, it requires a true partnership to be able to do that. But they have those same arrangements that, as long as you have high school baseball, you can't have a concurrent season. You're not going to split kids and split programs in order to be able to do that. So, and that's why I think there's an ask for, can we wait until 2025? Because a lot of things are, are in place and in motion for, for their organization. But as we know, we, there's also a group of people who are saying, we can do this, so...
I have a quick question before trustee Mercer. So in your homework, have you met with athletic directors at our three urban schools and administration at the schools, and what are their thoughts?
I have, and I have some of their thoughts with me tonight. And again, I think it was, it's kind of the same thing as, and we have people who have strong, close ties with, to baseball, value it as a sport, their families play it, they played it, but they have some concerns, a lot of them that I've already spoken to. But it takes a lot of, it's a big commitment to ask them to, you know, in the next four months, be able to pull this off. And they kind of have the same thing, that it's just, can we, can we put this off a year? And I, I think one of the challenges, and especially in the way that it's framed from the community, is that the former superintendent said in a newspaper article, you know, it's a heavy lift, we've got three sports, but we can do this in '23, '24. But it was never approved by the board, it was never an, an actual commitment from the board to, to do that, and that's part of the reason why they're coming forward. And there's a little bit of frustration saying, but we thought you had already done the homework, that you had done the due diligence on this. I walked in in July, and I'm like, well, all I know is I've got a spreadsheet with some numbers on it, and this is what it would potentially cost, but not really fully understanding all the nuances. I did... I didn't know up until last week about the concurrent season implications with the Mavs. And so, yeah, those are, those are the concerns, I think, expressed by our administrators. And, you know, they, they look at the same things, the Esser conversation, you know, and they have priorities, too, for their buildings. And, you know, those center around things like mental health and safety, and, you know, having adequate staffing and, and those kind of things. So, yeah, it's not, it's not that anybody was opposed to it, they just, they recognize the challenge that it will present for them.
Trustee Mercer.
I guess I'm slightly confused about concurrent season and why, and maybe this will be a question that people will address, but for me, one of the selling points of this is that more people get to play baseball, not the same people. Right? I mean, that's, if it's just the same people who are already playing, it's less useful to me. If it's getting more people involved who are unable to do that, so what's the problem if we run it at the current season? I mean, I...
Yeah, well, the season would, the Mavs' season would start after the conclusion of the state high school baseball season.
Setting up so that people, the same people could do both.
Correct.
So that...
If they chose.
I mean, but, so what's the pitch? Is it, this is just going to be so many more people that the Mavs is one team and this is three teams, or six teams, depending on viewpoint, and that's why more people get to participate?
Potentially. I think there's roughly 60 spots in the Mavs' organization for players. Yes, no, 60? Yeah. You know, in this situation, you know, if you ran a roster of 17, so you're 34 kids per team, if you have a varsity and a JV, I don't know if we would be able to actually field it. That's been one of the questions, is, could you field a full complement of JV and varsity at all three high schools? It's a question that hasn't really been answered. I have heard that, yes, we have the student athletes that are interested and would like to have that opportunity to do that, but I don't know.
Trustee F. Garris.
We're not in the comment section, but I'd like to answer that question, because I think I can answer it more thoroughly. The, the issue is, is that it's expensive to play for the Mavs. Not everybody can play for the Mavs. Time commitment from people, money that they have to pay each year...
Please no clapping tonight, thank you.
Those are all major considerations. It does affect 60 kids. The effect for the number of kids that play baseball clear through 14, 15 years old, because that's as far as you can really play without high school baseball around here, is hundreds around here. So, yeah, it's inequitable, to be honest with you. If you can't afford to play for the Mavs, but you, you got the chops, you're probably not going to play for the Mavs. You're going to go play a different sport.
So, are there any more questions from trustee Vogel?
Sorry, I know that you guys have already talked about Legion baseball, but I'm still catching up. So, one of the issues was that they already have their schedules set, and so it can't kind of overlap or anything like that with, with that schedule. So, what would prevent us from running into the same problem at this time next year?
Yeah, the, my understanding is that the American Legion from the state level signs a memorandum of understanding with Montana High School Association, and that memorandum is what sets in motion the fact that you can't play, you can't have competing...
So they would be concurrent seasons?
No.
Oh.
Nope. Concurrent means that Mavs are going, starting in March, and so is Sentinel High School baseball.
Right. So it's, it's not like we're putting our students, saying, you can play this or this?
No.
Okay. So they would be able to play high school football, I'm sorry, baseball, and then maybe after that's done, April, May, June, or something, then they could go into a summer season?
Late May, late May, the Legion season would start.
Trustee F. Garris.
Sorry, I feel like we should get into the comment section here pretty quick. So, the other issue for the Mavs this year is that if we put high school baseball into effect, the Mavs pretty much are going to have to forfeit all their games that are already scheduled, clear up until they could play, which means it would pretty much take them out of any sort of postseason competition. So, that's the big hitch for them, is that their schedule, I believe, is already set, and it is already set, and they would have to forfeit all those games during the high school baseball season.
Any final questions? This is the high school motion, so is there a motion on the table if there's no other Trustee Mercer.
I'll make an exploratory one, that would be, approve high school baseball of 2024, require the first year to be fundraised, and we decide 2025 after we see how it goes.
Okay, so now, are there any comments? Oh, no. Trustee comments first, but yeah, a second. Is there a second to his motion?
Could you just repeat them? The motion was to approve the...
Option four.
Option four.
Well, well, option four...
Oh, no, you edited.
Option four with the understanding that look into means that after the season, we discuss, and we maybe commit a subcommittee, I'm expanding, but how, however we look into, we look into deciding whether, but right now, we just decide 2024.
No, it's our option.
Right.
Is there a second, before we move on to? Second by trustee Wake. So now we're into trustee comments. Any trustee comments?
So essentially, the motion is, is that we give it a go for 2024 and 2025. If we don't, if the money isn't there and we can't figure it out, then there's no baseball. Is that what's being proposed?
Superintendent Hill.
So, and I recognize the complexity of how I placed options in front of you, and what I heard trustee Mercer say is exploratory motion. And so I don't know if that's really a motion. I think what he's trying to do is, is gauge interest. So, I'm not really sure that there's a motion on the table and a second yet. But in response to the, the thought that you would ask a group to fundraise $150,000 worth of equipment, uniforms, et cetera, and then say, but it's not guaranteed until, in 2025, would seem, that would be a really hard pill to swallow, I think, if, if I were on that side of that, that table. And that's just being, like, I said I could win this argument either, on either side of the debate tonight, but that would be, that would seem problematic. I think if, you know, if you make the motion, you ask them to fundraise, the idea is that, you know, you're directing myself to figure out how we're going to put this into the budget, and if not, that's a whole separate conversation, that we need to have budget reductions, and that we would look at where those reductions would come from across the board and not just maybe specifically to a sport. I don't know, you know, what it looks like to pull sports back out of a district. I've never been a part of that, and would happen, be something that I'd have to explore, but that would just be my, my caution on, on exploring that motion.
I would go with option four, and then as a district or as even a board, we can take a look back once we get through a season, too, right? Yeah, so if we do option four, that's something we can also look at, like what you're saying. So, trustee F. Garris.
Thank you. Gosh darn. So, there's, there's two sides to this. There's the financial side that we've exhaustively talked about here, and I, it's a real problem, right? I think, no offense to you, Micah, or anyone of the three high school folks that were involved in coming up with a plan, I think we, our plan's conservative, I do, and that's okay. You know, we'd rather be under than over. If you look at how it's funded each year, if you consider that 30% is fundraised, fundraised in perpetuity, just because that's what all the other sports are doing, you're probably looking at a, a cost of $80,000 to $100,000 a year for all, total for all three schools a year, after we raise $30,000 plus between the schools, maybe $40,000. The issue we have here is an equity issue. I brought it up a second ago. We talk a lot about equity on this board, and we've talked a lot about equity of girl and boy's sports and dispersment of funds, but I want to talk about a different equity. I want to talk about how, kind of what I just said, after the age of 13 or 14, baseball in, in Montana is a pay-to-play game. It is. As a public institution, we, we don't support any athlete that's, their passion and their skill is in baseball to continue into high school, and I don't want to play down the scholarship thing. It's not just going to a university when you get a scholarship in the, the major sports or any sports. Community colleges are very active with baseball, all over the Northwest. You can get, many kids get, get scholarships to community colleges and get an education that they wouldn't have been able to. The fear that I have here, and this is, this is an issue that I think that we really have to think about, is the engagement in baseball in this town is through the roof, in this state. And I can speak to engagement in baseball in the state by get-togethers at Play Fair beginning of June, where around the state, different baseball teams come here, and the whole area over there is plugged up. There's teams and cars from everybody everywhere you can imagine. During the spring, if you drive by Play Fair or any of the jumbo fields, the participation in baseball is through the roof here, yet we cut them off middle of, middle of, of middle school, end of middle school. There's no path there. And athletes, and I'm not one to speak on athletes, I'm not the body type for that, but I will speak from experience, athletes in middle school kind of pick an avenue. You know, you, you have a kid that's really great in basketball, and sure, they play football, and they play baseball, or whatever else, but when they get to high school, they play basketball. That's what they do. Football players do that. There's some cross athletes, but they really start to pick an avenue. One, because the parents can't do it anymore, they can't go to sports every day of every year, of the whole year, but that, you really kind of get your, your value out. We haven't done that. We, we've failed baseball players in Montana. It's not just Missoula, in Montana. I have a real concern with that. The High School Sports Association added baseball as a sport in Montana because they see that opportunity there. And what we're going to bicker over here, and I understand our, our financial shortcomings, but we're really talking about $80,000 to $100,000 a year to add opportunity for a lot of kids that can't afford at 15, 16 years old, their families can't afford the money or the time to play for the Mavs. God bless them, I love the Mavs, I go to games every year, but they can't afford to do that. Sure, the Mavs have some scholarships, and there's some stuff to get around that, but in general, it's just not an option. So my fear is, is that over 80 to 100 grand a year, we are not giving an avenue to, you know, a lot of kids that have an opportunity to be engaged with their school. Micah, you spoke to it really well in here, it was my favorite part of what you said, actually, but you spoke about how it, we see with kids that are involved in sports, engagement in school, graduation rates, all of those things are higher. It's a lot of spots in the three schools, and hopefully Sealy wants to do it. I would love to see Sealy have a team. It's a lot of spots that kids can take up there that can continue their, their sports thing. So, I'll get off my soapbox, because I could probably sit here and talk for an hour, because I'm Greek and we talk a lot, but I will say that this is very important. This is something, we, we are taking a sport that anecdotally, I think, is the second most popular sport in Missoula for youth, next to soccer in this town. You can't, in the spring, you just can't find a field without a baseball team on it. And we're failing our, our kids if we don't give them an opportunity to continue that. If they want to be a baseball player, and they want to go to college and be a baseball player, we should give them that path. I just, I feel strongly with that. How we do it, we have to think about the finances. Do we say 2024 is too late, fully fund 2025, and then from there on, we will start the process? Maybe that's a better option. Some folks in the audience aren't going to like that option, but I'm skeptical, and I'm a baseball guy, I'll, I'll tell my bias if it hasn't come out yet already. I, I coached baseball, my son plays baseball, I have a lot of friends that play baseball and coach baseball. I'm skeptical that we could put together a baseball season this year, I just am. A lot of the schedules are already coming out, the Mavs have their schedule, there's a lot against it for this spring, four months from now. But maybe it is something that we commit to fundraise for 2025, and it gives us a couple years to decide, more to decide how it's funded going forward. But I feel like it's something that, that we should take advantage of. We have a motivated group of, of the community, I'm assuming there's people out there, too. The only, last time we saw crowds like this, anybody that was here on the board during COVID was the last time we saw crowds like this, and that was online. So, it's obviously a popular thing, engaged thing, and so, I'll get off my soapbox, I'm going to stop now, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion there that you're talking?
There is a motion, there is a motion. I would like to amend trustee Mercer's, and I would like to say that 2025 is fully funded, and post 2025, we find a way to meld it into our budget, 2026 on. So pretty much, option four, except 2025 and the, and 2026 instead of 2024, 2025. Thank you.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
I'm, I'm glad you said all that, because I was wondering if, given the issue with the Mavericks, and the fact that it is late in the season, and it's not the fault of the people out there, I don't know who, but that, sometimes I feel like if we rush things, we don't do it well, and then it doesn't work, and then we think it's, the problem is what we were trying to do rather than the way we tried to do it. And again, people want it now, but if we made a commitment to start now so that it's done right, when it does happen, it just seems more reasonable to me.
I don't want an outside entity to impact what we decide here as Board of Trustees. I think even if they have their schedule set, that shouldn't impact our decision on what we want to do with our students. I know that's an issue, but I think we don't need to take that into consideration. They are a community partner, they're in our community, but I don't, that, it's similar to how I feel about with transportation and beach. We can't have others dictate what we do. And so I need to make sure that's clear, that we keep that on our mind when we make this decision. Trustee Mercer.
So two questions, or comment and a question, one for Jeff. So, are you saying then that through junior high, it's not pay-to-play? That there is a route for an average person to be on this high school team and not have to have come through pay-to-play club, 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 from when they were, you're saying, okay? Which matters a lot to me. The other question, I, I guess, and I was just a comment that, from my perspective, and maybe I've been out of touch, there's been public comment, but as a board through official things, this is the first, like, I've been asked to think about this, and, and we haven't, I don't know what the administration thought about over the past year, but there was no, but no board contemplation or study or whatever, and so, I, I think it's also very, it's very easy to say yes to things, it's hard to say no, we sometimes need to say no to things. I, I hear that there's potential problems, that if we proceeded, as we just said, we have Title IX problems, unless we do something else. So what is that spending? We don't even know what that is right now, right? I mean, I don't, I, and I guess I would want to see that. So, if we were, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I guess the alternative would be to what Jeff said, would be to say, we set up a subcommittee over the next dedicated time, something like four months, to really come back and come back with a proposal or something like that, if we're not going to get it done this spring anyways. And to also have a proposal to do what to do with the other sports, that we need to make it up, yada, 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 and have a coherent package plan.
I, I think that one of the things is that we're not, I do my best when I'm procrastinating. That midnight deadline for a school paper, I do write my best. But I'm just saying, I don't, we're not starting from there. The group already, the dedicated parents, and I know some of us met with the parents' parent group as well, they have, I don't, they've done a lot of their homework as well, and I really believe, I'll lay my cards out, too, I agree with trustee F. Garris, I think that it is a pay-to-play. As a parent of an athlete, baseball athlete, I see that we can only go to a certain amount, especially being BIPOC, being native athletes, there's a lot of different things. especially being BIPOC, being native athletes, there's a lot of different things. And I see baseball as a way that, where we have been able to step out of that. And I, being a baseball parent for Little League, I see the work that these parents have done, and I want to acknowledge that, that, that we do see that. And it is an equity issue, and I don't want to take, take away these students' dreams, because that's what this is. I want to be able to offer everything and anything we can to MCPS students. And I seen eyes light up from some of these females when we said flag football. And I think for a district, 100,000 is not compared to what our budget is. We have a great person here with numbers who can help us figure this out. But I think as a, as trustees, we, that's why we pay Micah what we pay Micah. So we are this oversight, and I think it's our job to give the opportunities that we can to students. And I do see that we are coming to the cliff of ESER funding. But when those people were hired, they knew it was with ESER funding. So it's not like it's, we're pulling the blank, the rug out from under them. That's just my point of view from this. And I love what we were able to do with the ESER funding, and I wish it can continue. But that's just my thought, is I think this is something that I really like option four, but I am one of you, of how many votes. So I'm really looking for a motion on the table, so that we can move forward, but I do think we need to give these students that opportunity, that access, and that's one thing we always talk about, is access to opportunity. And this is one way we can give this to the students, and to other students in our district. Trustee Witt.
Sorry, this is not a motion. Apologize in advance. I'll lay my cards out, too. I am, really would love to add all opportunities, like the flag football, the baseball. I do acknowledge they put in a ton of work. I have no doubt that they could raise the money quickly for this. I do worry, like, could we possibly be ready for '24? Maybe we could be for '25. I worry, not necessarily about the ESER cliff, because, yeah, you're right, they did know. Like, we hired those positions, they know. The teachers are going to continue to come to us, still wanting those positions, because they're very helpful, which means we did a good job of hiring the right things. But we're still in an environment where we are getting 7%, 8% inflation year over year, and the state says you get three, right? So, even though this is a drop in the bucket of MCPS, that bucket is getting smaller and smaller and smaller in real dollars, right? So we're, we are looking at cutting going forward. And Pat's budget, there with a $200,000 deficit for next year, with a 1%, that's pretty rosy. We're going to be a lot worse than that, and I, without some other things, and I know there's a possibility of a safety levy and stuff, but we don't have that money yet. This time next year, we might know. We might be in a better spot to fully make a decision, because that type of, that safety levy can help us alleviate some of these issues if we go down that road. But right now, I feel like we'd be spending money that we do not have yet. Even if we try to make it budget neutral, we're still cutting everywhere along because of what inflation has done and what the schools get funded with by the state. And I tell everyone all the time that comes and talks to me, and I've talked to a bunch of baseball parents, we are constantly going further behind because of the way the state funds us. We're, and there's, they're not looking at fixing it. That's not what the legislature has looked at. They want it, there was a bill up there to raise the cap of the max they can give us for an increase above 3%. It died. It's the one time I've seen the legislature say, no, no, we don't want more power for ourselves. And so like, I'm, I feel like if we're going to do anything, it really should be, similar to what, what Jeff kind of wants, not '24, look at '25, but I have a hard time being committal to it right now. I, I think this is just a really difficult time financially. I think we'll have a much clearer picture in the spring, and I'd love to give them more time to make sure everything is set up properly. I do want all these kids to have their opportunities to go to college, to play baseball. I know that it's expensive to do the Mavs. I'd love to have the high school baseball be there and be much more affordable for them. It's just such a hard time. And that's where, like, yeah, Micah said, he can argue both points, I think I could too. Think there's, yeah, eight, nine, 10 options that could be on the table, but that's my thought, is similar to Jeff's, but I can't, I can't fully commit right now.
Trustee Mercer.
Try another hybrid one. A, last year, we, we laid off, we didn't lay off, we did not rehire what a dozen teachers or more, and, but we did that, right? And, and we could have had better class ratios, so that's always on my mind. So my hybrid option then is, we do 20, well, 2024 if they can raise it, I mean, I, that seems very difficult to do, but 2025 if not, and that it needs to be budget neutral within the athletic department. And then, and I don't want to set it up like where now everybody hates baseball because the football players don't get new pads, but I can live with, we've allocated this money to extracurricular activities, and if we can make it work within that, great. And I do think baseball has as much entitlement to, a portion of that, as does soccer or whatever. Just because soccer got there first, I don't think means anything. So that's my mo, I don't, some motion is budget neutral, we, we say, go for it with fundraising, but it's budget neutral after.
So, yes for 2024 with fundraising, budget neutral for 2025?
Yes, that's, I guess, my motion.
Is there a second?
With any fundraising that is carried over from 2024, would go to 2025, if I can.
Oh, he already had a motion.
So we don't have a sec, we don't have a second on that yet, which would then allow for...
What's, what was your motion again, trustee of Garris?
My motion was, is fundraise for 2025, budget neutral, starting in 2026. So we would not have baseball in spring of '24.
So there wasn't a second?
I didn't hear the budget neutral part. If that's part of the motion, I'll just second that.
You'll second that? All right. So now we're apart to the trustee comments, which we kind of are, we're already doing. Any comments from any trustees on the motion on the table? Trustee Vogel.
I'll try to phrase this so it's not a question. I'm assuming that if we do start a male baseball team, then it would possibly pull some of the potential male track participants, which maybe some of the funding from track and field could then be shifted over toward baseball.
Any other comments from a trustee? Trustee Mercer.
I guess my thought is that by saying it's budget neutral, that, a little bit splitting the baby of saying, we can commit that far, and we could decide later if we want to do something else or whatever. But that's a commitment that I could live with right now. I think we have real problems to address on proportionality that is going to have to be dealt with, but if we're talking two years out before we say, and it's budget neutral, I think we give ourselves time to address those.
I have a comment. I think as a board, we, I didn't know former superintendent Lodge said what he said to the newspaper. I feel like we were not informed enough by our superintendents to get us to here. But I feel like we do need, I liked your motion, because it gives these stu, these seniors, they're seniors, that opportunity that they will miss. And so, and that bothers me, so I'm just putting that out there, that I will most likely not be in favor of this, but I'm one of you, one of however many votes there are, because it does leave out those seniors now. Trustee Wallach.
So I remember when Sentinel came in, and the group of parents that were trying to fundraise to convert the old building to basically a sports and exercise facility. I feel like that was rushed on us, and we said as much, and I kind of feel similarly here. When you say that you don't want seniors to miss out, I get that, and I think all of us are generally in support of high school baseball here, for sure. But I'm kind of on the same pages over there, where more time to roll it out and do it properly would make more sense, would be more of a compromise to everybody in the community, not being dictated by anybody else, but taking all those viewpoints and stakeholders into consideration. So I would be in support of this motion that's made. I think we're still going to have some answering to do, because like we talk about with the optics, we are going to be making cuts, and this is all general fund, and so we're going to have to own that if that's what we're doing. But I think that, as has been discussed, there are benefits that are made by offering high school baseball. And I think that 2025 and fundraising, and then general fund by '26, is probably the best compromise we can possibly come up with, considering everything we discussed tonight. So that would be my viewpoint.
Trustee of Garris.
Yeah, well, Lena, I totally agree with you. It tugs at my heartstrings, too. I, I want it right now, I do. Again, I'm going to get yelled at by some people for saying this, I don't think it's even realistic, just to be honest. I, I don't think it can be put together that fast. I don't think in four months you can raise $150,000, get into a schedule, and schedule everything out. There'll be some disagreement with that, but I don't think it's realistic, especially since we have to really put it on our administrators, and that's the only thing that gives me a little solace in that, is that it, it's, we're about a month too late. If this was the end of October, they probably could do it, so.
If we had put it on the agenda sooner, would it have made a difference? Because they've been coming to be, to ask to be on our agenda, where we never did. So, trustee Witt, then trustee Mercer.
Yeah, I think being on the agenda earlier would have been nice to properly evaluate it. I didn't know about this being a big issue until all of a sudden, people were showing up. As far as the motion on the table, my thought really is, it's hard to commit for me right now, for something saying like, yes, I will add this next year, for sure. If you fundraise, I'd much rather visit this in like, four or five months, where I would be very likely to support it, but it gives me a much better idea of what's going on in Pat's world. And that's my biggest concern right now, is that I think it could be fiscally irresponsible spending money I don't think we have yet.
Trustee Witcher, then vice chair Walker Andrews.
Despite everything, I, I just want to acknowledge the fact that, yes, a former superintendent might have said 2023, a mistake was made. And for that, as a member of this board, I'm, I, I want full transparency with the public, and also, I know that the public had been asked to be on, on the agenda, but I want to put that into a little bit of perspective. We just hired a new superintendent, and I feel, I stand behind the work that this district has done in, in kind of delineating what needed to get taken care of. So I just needed to at least say that piece, and I'm, I, I feel confident that this is something that we can now take on and figure out, because we were taking care of shop beforehand, if that makes sense.
I just wanted to say, I think that the motion in front of us is just changing of the dates, and so, the reason I bring that up is because we say that we want to require the fundraising but with milestones, so you get to look all along about whether the funding is coming.
Trustee Witt, then trustee Mercer.
And my comment, I'm not concerned that they'll fundraise the 150. I actually think they'll do that pretty easily, and the milestones we set out, they'll hit. I'm very confident on that. I am less confident in our own budget and seeing how union negotiations go, going forward. Definitely have full faith in that group right there, and how much effort they've already put forward, that they'll hit anything we put out there.
Trustee Mercer.
I guess to me, that's part of the budget neutral part, because if we choose down the road to go to the community and say, hey, we want some more money for safety funds, someone's going to say, well, you just did baseball, what are you talking about? You need more money? So that is neutral, and I get it's all the same pot, and we could take the cuts and then take them out of sports, but I, I'm fine with our existing allocation of balance of resources. So if it's neutral, that makes it better. I do think we should make a subcommittee. I do think, not being on the agenda or not, I mean, to me, from my perspective, we should have, if we're doing this sort of thing, have an actual look at it over time, not just have it, if this same conversation was happening a month earlier, I'd be in the exact same place. I mean, it doesn't do, so, again, but the budget neutral part to me is what makes it plausible, and we can look at things as we go along.
All right, wrapping up, any other final trustee comments? All right. So now are there, is there any public comment? First up is Mr. Joe Fisher. So before we start public comment, I'm going to read my little spiel before. So, give me a moment. The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for board response or the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. You are limited to three minutes. The chair can interrupt you if you are out of order, or if you are over your three minutes. And please, no applause tonight. There is a large group here, so please no applause tonight.
I'm Joe Fisher, J-O-E-F-I-S-C-H-E-R. As I stated, I'm a teacher at Sentinel High School, as well as a taxpayer to MCPS. And as I mentioned, the importance of every type of activity or club, if it aligns with the values and goals of MCPS, is, is definitely worth investigating. My issue that was already talked to was just unresolved issues. And with that being said, I really want to thank, first of all, the, the parents and supporters of baseball that brought this issue forward, and then also the professionalism of the admin, especially superintendent Hill, and the principals who did some work to, to try to put some numbers to this. So I'm very appreciated, appreciative of that. Thank you.
Next is...
One moment, do we have any comment from our student trustees? I'd like them to go first, before we go into the general.
Yes, we do.
Alrighty, I was trying to, you know, I had a lot of...
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to say and spell your name.
Oh, sorry. I'm Ryan Howell, first name R-Y-A-N Howell, H-O-W-E-L-L. And the whole time, I've just been thinking that it's, you know, definitely, there's one side that's being very represented here, and I really just wanted to touch on the team cultures that come along what we're putting money behind. You know, football is the male-dominated sport at Sentinel, and while, you know, I attend all the football games, there is a part where I believe that many of the players aren't upholding Sentinel's values. And I can't really, you know, I, I can't fully get behind seeing another male-dominated sport when we're not holding the other one accountable. And I see that, you know, I, I don't know much about many of the baseball players, but I find this as, you know, an issue, seeing how some of these, when the culture is brought together, how they treat the other part of the student body. And so I don't know what part you guys play in that, but what I see is that there definitely needs to be more accountability at that level, before we continue to throw money at another male-dominated sport. And while I'm, I fully understand the effects of team sports, I've played team sports all my life, and I'm fully behind flag football. I know many people that play in Kalispell, and it has many great benefits, but I really think that, what I thought the whole time was that, I think that there does need to be more accountability behind these male-dominated sports. So that's just what I was thinking.
Hello, my name is Carson Bay. First name C-A-R-S-O-N, last name B-A-Y. And I am here, and I am a... And I am here, and I am a senior at Sentinel High School. I am here hoping that the board will allow us the opportunity to play high school baseball in the spring 2024. I have played baseball since the age of four with Mount Sentinel Little League. From there, I had the privilege of being a part of a state championship Little League team that made it to the regional World Series. This was an experience we will never forget. Many of these same kids would love the chance to play for a Sentinel High School baseball program. Several of these athletes stopped playing baseball because there was no opportunity to continue without a high school program. Many of these kids worked during the summer, and some are unable to financially commit to a Legion program. Tonight, we are hoping the board will give us the opportunity to have a last chance to represent our school during our senior year. We know you have a tough decision, but we are hoping you can give up to 100 eager high school students in our community the ability to play a sport they love as much as I do. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Aidan Cabrera.
Hello, my name is Aidan Cabrera, A I D E N C A B R E R A. And first of all, I just want to thank you guys for putting high school baseball on the agenda. Baseball has been my passion for a long time, for as long as I can remember. And realizing now that high school is my last chance to play in my life, I really want to help put toward this, I just really want to help out and figure out a way that I can keep playing and keep this passion that I've built up going as long as possible. And baseball can really open up some options for me, whether it's going out for employment or getting a scholarship at a college. And another thing that has really opened me up to this is empowering at Mount Sentinel. I've been able to watch all these younger kids go out and grow and like their love for the game just empower them and get them through all the tough times that they have, whether it's losing a game or even a championship. But even then, they still come back and they try harder and harder every year. And I know one of the problems is like equipment. Most of us already have, most of us baseball players already have equipment, and even then we're still willing to help donate or even help build up money so that other people can play and have their own equipment so that they can compete at a high school level. And then doing this for high school would not just help for me, but help for all the other kids, whether it's Little Leaguers from Pee Wee all the way up to, all the way up to us high schoolers. I just want them to have a chance to actually go out and follow their passion. Thank you for your time.
Amanda Ferrulli.
It's on, okay. Name's Amanda Ferrulli, A M A N D A F E R R U L L I. Being a new member to the Missoula community, coming from a large state where high school football is rampant, and it is paid for by the school districts, and it is saving kids' lives. Up here, it was a shock and a hard one for my son, something that he got into to kind of save him from himself. And having to come up and pay thousands of dollars, not only to sit on a bench and never play a season, but to get his dear dreams destroyed and not want to play baseball again. He told me to come fight, fight for high school baseball so other kids don't have to go through that. Kids need high school baseball, boys, girls, whatever, need high school baseball. It's a big thing. It's a big thing for families. It's a big thing for kids. It brings joy. I don't know if you've been to a game, any kind of game, but it's amazing what it's done for my son, and I hope he gets back into it, what I've seen with kids and parents and families, they need it. And people can't afford to pay. I've seen in this community, people can't afford to pay. So please, please vote for it. These people can raise money. I know they can raise it, and I know you can pay for it. I know you can. I've heard back and forth, but I know you can pay for it. Thank you.
C J Fortney. Is C J Fortney?
Hi, my name is C J Fortney, C E J A Y F O R T N E Y. Hello, hello, my name is C J Fortney, and I'm a fifth grader at Lewis Sinclair School. In a few years, I will be a freshman in high school. If there's any sport that I would want to play in school, it is baseball. I've played baseball since I was three years old. Baseball is my favorite sport for the skills and lessons I learn. It teaches me sportsmanship and has given me some of my closest friends. Please vote yes for baseball in high school. Thank you.
Isaac Halls.
My name is Isaac Halls, I S A A C H A L L S. I'm a freshman at Big Sky High School, and I've played baseball for all my life, and I've enjoyed every second of it through the ups and downs. Last year, I was cut by the Missoula Mavericks because I just wasn't there skill-wise. I was still fortunate enough to go play club ball for the Missoula Eagles because my family could afford it. This isn't about me, though. This is about the less fortunate kids that can't afford to play Legion or club ball. This is about the kids who get cut and quit baseball because there's nowhere to play and improve their skills. This could open up so many doors for us young men to grow and improve as baseball players and human beings as a whole. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you vote in support of high school baseball.
Devon Leader.
Is this on? My name is Devon Leader, that's D E V A N L E D E R. I'm coming this time without anything pre-written in baseball. I believe we call that a change-up. And again, if you can please approve high school baseball, my puns will end. So as I look at high school baseball and what it does for people in the community, I really do want to encourage you to look around this room, but also if you can take a look at all these boys standing here, and there's a room that's full of people on the other side, I can't imagine that there's many issues that pop up that bring this many people to your meetings. The benefits that we've talked about and the costs that are there are far out of line. The benefits far outweigh the cost. And when we talk about $150,000 for an individual year, when we're looking at 30 kids on three teams at three different high schools, if one kid at each high school gets a scholarship and goes on to college, that's already exceeded that cost. And beyond that, now we've made an investment in these kids. These kids can come back, and they can contribute to the economy in Missoula. They can donate to things that actually matter to education in Missoula and further raise families in this area. So this is something that isn't a one-time expense, but this is an investment in the future of our community. So I want to encourage you all to please consider high school baseball. Please vote yes. My son is a freshman this year. I don't want him to miss a year. I want him in now. We're here, we want to participate with you. Please let us do that this year. Thank you.
Jude Leader.
My name is Jude Leader, J U D E L E D E R. I'm here in support of high school baseball once again, and for my third time, hoping not to strike out. Personally, this has meant the world to me. I love baseball. I've always played it since I can remember, and it would mean the world if you could approve it. I've also recently had the opportunity to talk with a few seniors who, in our schools, who really just love it, and they're really sad because they don't think they're going to have the opportunity ever again to play baseball. And so I would ask that you support this once again and vote yes on it. I also took a petition around the school, and I have, out of the 1/6 of Sentinel High School roughly that I got to talk to, I have 62 boys who said they want to play baseball and would be interested. That fills four teams, which means there's also enough support to do that fundraising. And many of us out here from any school are willing to help fundraise, and we are ready to work hard for it. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me once again, and I hope you can vote yes for high school baseball.
Dave Lodwig.
Please turn your mic on.
Is it on? There we go. Sorry. My name is Dave Lodwig, D A V E L O D W I G. I moved to Missoula, Montana a little over 10 years ago. Before that, I spent 10 years coaching high school baseball in Washington. Before that, I played three years of college baseball in Oregon. Before that, I was a two-year varsity letterman at my high school in Vancouver, Washington. And before all of that, I was a child. I was a child that grew up in a very difficult situation. My dad was an alcoholic, my mom was schizophrenic. They got in a fistfight when I was seven years old in my school parking lot, and they separated. My childhood was defined by welfare checks and food stamps. I was homeless twice in my early teens. And then all of a sudden, I realized I could put a bat on a ball. And for the low cost of $100, $25 a year and an athletic fee 30 years ago, I was given the opportunity to not just find an education, but to find a way out of my life circumstances. We, and I want to say thank you because this is such an incredible weight that I feel on all of you as I'm listening to your discussion, the reality of managing such a large budget with shortfalls coming, that is not lost on any of us. And so we say thank you to all of you for even putting this on the agenda and allowing this to be discussed tonight. I hope all of you see this as an incredible opportunity. Are there hurdles? Yes. Are there obstacles? Of course. But this is an opportunity to expand this incredible game, this incredible platform to a wide group of students that far reaches beyond what I think we even realize. My son plays for the Missoula Mavericks. It is a fantastic organization that we love. Last year, there were 48 players across, spread across three teams. By adding high school baseball, be it 2024 or 2025, which sounds reasonable, that would easily triple the amount of participants in this community at the high school level, giving them possibly the same opportunities I had. Thank you again for considering this. Thank you.
Jackson Lodwig.
Hi, my name is Jackson Lodwig, J A C K S O N L O D W I G. I'm a student at Sentinel High. I also play for the Mavs. I can't tell you how excited I am for the idea of representing my school in the sport of baseball. While I enjoy playing for the Mavs, it's not the same as it would be playing for my school. I know that there are a lot of my classmates who would like to continue to play baseball after Little League. But the cost of American Legion baseball and the small amount of players that can actually make the team keeps them from continuing on with the sport. If we were to add baseball, it would create more opportunities for students like me to stay involved with something that they love. Please vote yes tonight and give baseball a future in our town, even if we have to wait until 2025. It would give us time to help raise the funds that our school district can finally offer kids the chance to play this great game. There are people all across Missoula that are willing to step up and not just help get baseball started, but to also help raise funds for other sports and activities. Please just give us a chance. Thank you.
William McCarthy.
Good evening, my name is William McCarthy, W I L L I A M, M C C A R T H Y. I am a parent of two Missoula County high schools, I guess one that graduated a year ago and one that's a senior at Sentinel. I was lucky enough to coach both my boys in baseball, two back-to-back Little League World Series, regionals, travel ball, where I've countless kids that I've had through Little League as a Little League president, administrator. And the value of baseball is like nothing else that my kids and other kids have experienced. It is the weight room for their brain. With that said, the real reason I'm here, in my day job, I'm a lawyer, and as part of that, I deal with a lot of school issues, especially school athletic issues, NCAA athletes, high school association issues on a pretty frequent basis. Ridgeway doesn't say what's being discussed tonight. Ridgeway says you have to have the same number of sports. When you have the same number of sports for boys and girls, then you have proportionality, but only when you have the same number. So if you, so when I look at your options, those aren't actually your options under the Ridgeway settlement. The Ridgeway settlement approved by the Montana Federal District Court says you either got to start cutting sports of one, or you have to add. And it says specifically, "A limitation of funds shall not be a justification for offering an equal number of sports between males and females." Currently, M C P S is in violation of the Ridgeway settlement and of the federal law. Again, the Title IX issue is you don't have to allocate any more money. You then just have to take the pot of money and then proportion between the sports. So when you go 2025, it's now. You have to go now. These are issues that have been raised for a while, kids that have waited. And so currently, this is an equal protection issue for these kids. And so it is when you go, what do the optics look like? What do we do with teachers? You don't have a choice on this one. You have to, right now. That's what Ridgeway says. You can't make just baseball raise funds for baseball either. All of them is, all of those sports can raise funds. That's the Title IX issue. But again, you don't have to allocate it, but you have to add it. But again, you don't have to allocate it, but you have to add it, or you have to eliminate. That one has to happen. I'm sorry that it feels like maybe that's now when you're hearing that. For a couple of months, I think I've been saying it, but that is the reality. That is what Ridgeway says. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees and administration. Good to see you guys again. We are really excited to be here tonight.
Name and spelling, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you knew it by now. M-I-S-S-Y, M-I-C-U-L-K-A. Thank you. We are excited to be here tonight, even though we're all probably a little tired. The Parents for Missoula High School Baseball are represented by the Yellow Lanyards, and we would not be here tonight without such strong family involvement. Also, as you've seen for the last few months, many MCPS students have chosen to show leadership by speaking on behalf of their beloved sport. Many are here tonight. Their engagement directly expresses MCPS's vision for youth leadership opportunities and community engagement. Thank you for putting high school baseball on the agenda. We understand that you are in the midst of some very tough budgeting decisions, and so your consideration of this issue is doubly appreciated. Since money is always the biggest elephant in the room, the representatives of our parent group have been poring over budgets and finding many creative ways to save money. We will continue to share these cost-saving ideas with administration so that when the district has to take over funding, it is at a minimal expense. I did hear what you said tonight, Micah, but we want to break the mold of not being part of that. Our parents are poised and ready to begin fundraising for the 2024 inaugural season. We are confident that we can meet the milestones and amounts that you and Superintendent Hill could set for us. From the beginning, this group's goal has been to get as many Missoula boys on the baseball field as possible. 2024 is still a tangible goal with the help that we could offer outside of the box and would give so many boys the baseball season they have been dreaming of. You have seen this parent group show up consistently. We will continue to show up. We are here for our A.D.s and our administration, but most of all, for our community of young Missoula baseball parents are a breed who come together and help. To that end, we hope that a yes vote tonight can be used as a collaborative model between the district and a parent group, so that other diverse clubs and sports, for example, robotics and girls' flag football, can figure out how to secure the support and funding they need, and in this way honoring MCPS's strategic plan, specifically Mega Issue Number Seven with the goal of family and community engagement. I respectfully ask you to consider beginning high school baseball in the spring of 2024 with community funding. Thank you.
My name's Sean Michulka, S-E-A-N, M-I-C-U-L-K-A. I had prepared some other things, but after the discussions tonight, I was going to change it a little bit. I just wanted to offer a little clarification and maybe some perspective. There was some discussion about the overlapping between the high school season and American Legion. So American Legion has what they call non-conference games and conference games. The non-conference games are mostly in the early part of the season, and those are the games that would be affected by high school baseball. The conference games are the ones that determine rankings and seedings for the postseason, and those games begin after the high school season. And for some perspective, baseball in 2024 would mean that for the first time in fifty years, everyone in the baseball community would have the opportunity to play high school baseball. And since the high school state tournament will be hosted right here in Missoula in 2024, it would be the one and only chance that they would ever have to play, for many boys, it would be the one and only chance they would ever have to play high school baseball for their hometown and front of their hometown. Thank you.
My name is Scott Nicolarsen, S-C-O-T-T-N-I-C-O-L-A-R-S-E-N, and I'm the Vice President of the Missoula Mavericks Board of Directors, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the board. I think it's kind of cool that we can all be here together in a room. You know, I have a lot, a lot of friends here on both sides of the issue, and we're here in a room discussing baseball with all the stuff going on in the world. Like, we're talking about baseball right now. It's, it's really cool. I want to say that the Missoula Mavericks support the just and equitable implementation of high school baseball in Montana. We support the idea of bringing more kids in and being given the opportunity to participate in the sport. You know, for the last fifty years, Legion baseball has filled the void left by there being no high school baseball in the state. For our organization, you can understand how hard it would be to think about having to change that model that's been going on for as long as I've been around, half a century. Our hope is that Missoula can help cause, can help the cause of implementing high school baseball in a way that is fair all across Montana. To plan a 2020, 2025 start to the high school baseball season for all the double-A schools in Montana seems to make the most sense. This will give all the large communities across Montana the chance to be included and be held to the same standard. This is the right decision for the students in Missoula, and it ensures that they will be given equal opportunities with all the other students in the state. Our board submitted a more detailed letter that I hope you all have looked at. It throws some bullet points out there that kind of talk about more of the logistics of our season, economic impacts of us, you know, having a Memorial Day tournament that would be in jeopardy. Just really appreciate the opportunity to come in here tonight and just, you know, give our support for 2025 high school baseball, and thanks for your time.
Harley Pau, H-A-R-L-E-Y-P-A-U-G-H. I was pretty excited when I got in here, so my handwriting wasn't very good. I'm not going to totally recycle everything everybody said. Everybody said some really great points, and I just want to thank Micah for listening to us and board members, all of your guys' comments and your discussion have been very, very fruitful. We got your guys' attention. The mission from day one, you know, since we started this Missoula Parents for High School Baseball, you know, group was to get a vote, right? Year aside, get a vote. These boys would love to be able to play, as they have said, and it's just so awesome to be able to, like, listen to them. I don't even know if you guys want to listen to the parents. It's really the kids, right, that are driving a lot of this. So we're here to fight for them and support them. So again, a yes vote would be fantastic. Thank you very much.
My name is Cole Smith, C-O-L-E-S-M-I-T-H. To start, forty-seven states in America fully offer baseball as an, as it is an available varsity sport at their schools. I think it would be a shame to not have the opportunity in high school as a senior to play and receive a Sentinel Letter and baseball as a varsity sport. Reason behind this personally would be my past experiences with not having football as a even possible feasible option, if I wanted to try to play that due to a severe concussion. Also, basketball didn't work out past sophomore year for me, as I am not the tallest person in the world. But as somebody who has offers to play baseball in college and with baseball as my main sport, I played Little League alongside many other boys here in Missoula, and I've heard and seen many of them say they have, they would have loved to play baseball longer, and if it was an available, valuable, and reasonable option for them to continue playing. Having Missoula County Public Schools playing baseball would give many young boys the opportunity to do something positive that they enjoy, and this will by default increase the amount of young boys that keep playing through high school instead of only until the end of eighth grade. And with that being said, I think it is time to drive forward this achievable change today. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Doty, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-D-O-T-Y. I'm here to speak on behalf of everybody standing in the hallway, which I hope you can see, and the many more people that are outside. I've played baseball for an extremely long time, pretty much all of my life. I've also played other sports, as basketball and football, but I know for a fact I do not just speak for myself when I say baseball is the love of my life, and it's kept me going for so long. There's been so many opportunities I've had to play baseball elsewhere that just don't go past eighth grade. I did play for the Missoula Mavericks last year, but it was a really shame to see that a lot of my friends didn't even, either A, make the team, or B, couldn't afford it. There's a lot of talent and skill that are wasted on less of, less opportunities that we have in Missoula, and I think that baseball for high school would be a great change to the community. We've been fighting for it for a very long time now, as it got approved in 2022, and I just think that, I mean, I think Missoula's, as a community, has proved itself that we want it really bad, and I think we can handle it. I mean, there is other schools in base, in Missoula that aren't even just double-A. There's A schools, NB schools too, that have somehow made it. I don't think that funding would be a problem, but I'm not an expert, that's just from you guys, so I can't really talk on that. But from my experience, I really do think that Missoula baseball, especially for high school, is a great step forward in our community and help a lot of things out. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Palmer, C-H-A-R-L-I-E-P-A-L-M-E-R, and I'm the parent of a child who spent five years in the Missoula Mavericks program, and now I'm proud to say he's playing collegiately under scholarship, and I'm also a former board member for the Mavs organization. Up until last year, Montana was one of only a very few states that did not sanction baseball at the high school level. In fact, Wyoming is the only state currently that does not sanction high school baseball. American Legion baseball, conversely, has been played in Missoula since 1928, so almost a hundred years of history with the Legion program. I'm fully supportive of MCPS adding baseball. More kids playing this great sport represents a win for all involved, even for those of us in the Legion community. Sure, it shortens our season by a third and requires us to trust our Legion players to coaches who on the calendar get our players before we do, but those are changes we're willing to make because it's the right thing to do for our kids and for the sport. I would only ask that when it's done, that it be done well. Starting in 2024, regardless of who is going to pay for it, just does not seem prudent to me. Coaches hired, equipment ordered, playing and practice fields secured, umpires scheduled, athletic training services established, none of these have been done as far as I know. And a 2024 season means, as been noted several times tonight, we're currently four months away from that. A spring 2025 beginning date seems much more prudent. Hopefully, the bulk of the other double-A schools will be starting then as well, so finding appropriate competition and creating schedules will be much more straightforward. In the sixteen months between now and March of 2025, we can more effectively begin to plan for the financial and logistical challenges that this massive undertaking will require. Again, if we're going to do this, let's do it right. So with my understanding of what you've talked about tonight, that would be supporting option two. Thank you for your service as board members, very, very much appreciated, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Miles Crawford, M-I-L-E-S-C-R-A-W-F-O-R-D. I am a sophomore in high school. I have been playing baseball since I was seven years old, and I've always been very passionate about the sport. I think it's a, it's great physically, it builds relationships with your teammates, it's, it's a great sport all round. And it's a sport where it's, it's always been my favorite sport. I mean, I'm a smaller guy. I can't play basketball, I can't play football. So baseball's been the sport I've done all my life, and so I've played Little League my whole life, actually up until this last spring where I did go to travel ball because we just, we're not able to pay for it. We didn't want to go, and also, we didn't, we didn't, could not pay for it, and we could not pay for the time commitment also for a six-month season, baseball season. And so high school baseball would give me the opportunity and many other guys like me to advance their skills earlier to where they don't have to go play in a expensive travel ball or Legion team. And especially with there being the lack of teams, like, kids can't advance their skills. I mean, I, I love, I love my Little League, I love my coaches, there are great people on our board at Mountain Jumbo, love them all, but there's only, only so much you can do in Little League. And you just can, that was my biggest complaint, was I could not advance my skills to the level that I wanted to, and I just was not able to advance my skill up until last year. And so I think being able to play high school baseball would enable me to advance my skills without having to go pay for a big travel ball or Legion team, and I'm sure that is the case for many other guys out there like me. Thank you.
Just want to say hello and thank you for letting me speak.
Could you please tell us your name and spelling?
Oh, sorry. Lawrence King, L-A-W-R-E-N-C-E. I have been in Missoula for thirty years, but I've had three kids play Little League baseball. I've also had two of my sons go through the Mav program, so I've been, a big part of baseball's been a big part of my life. As you can see with the young men who've come up here and sat and talked to you.
That does not count against your time, by the way.
Thank you. I won't need it all. But just by the example of the young men who've come up here and talked to you, baseball has done quite a thing to them in their short lives. And you guys have made this personal, and I'm going to make this personal for you. If you, if you're going to say no to baseball, I want you to be able to look in the mirror and say no to the young men who just came up here and talked to you to plead about having them continue to play a game. them continue to play a game that they love in high school. Make sure that when you make this decision, that you can look yourself in the face and say, "I made the right decision." And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Jamie Bay, J-A-M-I-B-A-Y. Thank you for having us here tonight. I just wanted to talk on behalf of a senior at Sentinel. After hearing many of these comments, I just want to show my desire to move forward and for having maybe the board amend the motion and allow these kids a chance to play in 2024. We've been under a lot of deadlines in the past, we've raised money and funds as families and communities in the past. Sometimes deadlines are good to get the job done, and I think this group of families and community supporters can do that if we're just given the chance. Thanks for your time.
Corbin Plenger.
And I've been playing baseball since I was able to pick up a bat, and, I'm nervous. And I know plenty of my fellow friends and students who would love to play the game of baseball but aren't able to because of certain circumstances, or they got cut. I'm just glad to see everyone that showed up here to support today and show how much they care about the students and all of us here wanting to play high school baseball. I know if all of us come together, and we do, and we run fundraisers, I know that we can pay for it and help out, and yeah, thank you for your time.
Judson Miller.
Turn your mic on, please.
I didn't know I needed it. My name is Judson Miller, J-U-D-S-O-N-M-I-L-L-E-R, and I'm here in a couple different roles. First and foremost, it is my privilege to represent Hellgate High School, but I'm also here just as an educator, and it's been also a privilege to work in a number of different schools that had successful baseball programs. I've done it as a strength and conditioning coach, I've done it as a teacher, I've done it as an administrator, and baseball makes a huge difference in communities, and I think it is inarguable that it is a benefit to everybody. But having said that, I also know what it takes to implement a baseball program. It is a major sport, and it takes a major level of commitment and planning and understanding. And I can tell you that in four months, having done this before, that does not give the time and the quality that a major sport requires to implement well. I also have concerns, because as much as I love baseball, I was also an English teacher, and I ran a philosophy club, and I love reading, and I love writing, and I love hot water in our foods room, and a number of other things. And I would like to know a little bit more about what our budget landscape looks like before we commit to a program that may require trimming in other areas or an exchange for other things. So I, it is my advocacy that we wait until we get a clearer picture on what the budget landscape looks like before we embark on a baseball adventure. And I say that with deep care, with love, with respect, and I've seen baseball bring all of the good things. I've seen scholarships, I've seen it put kids through college that wouldn't otherwise have that opportunity, but I also know that it comes at, it takes a lot of energy, and right now, we've got a lot going on, and I would like to focus a major level of energy to bring a major sport, and right now, we don't have that capacity. Thank you for your time.
Paul Wilson.
I wasn't going to speak, but I wanted to just talk about one thing that's been said over and over again. I actually run two travel ball teams in this town, trying to provide as much opportunity as possible for these kids to play baseball. My Eagles program offers a lot of these kids that don't make the Mavs and don't go out for Mavs opportunity. One thing I want to just, there's a lot going on, I could talk for hours, but what I wanted to address, I'm a dad of four, I run my own business, pretty busy. We start planning for uniforms in February and planning tournaments, planning schedule in February, and our season usually starts by April. And I'm not real good at asking for help, so I do it, and again, I'm a father, I run my own business, and I'm able to get uniforms ordered, in, sized, while I'm doing a warehouse multiple nights a week, coaching these kids how to play baseball. So I get it, I want it done right as well. I have three kids, one's a junior, one's a freshman, one's a sixth grader, and I want them to experience baseball at the high school level, and I want it done right, but it can be done right. I couldn't imagine what a guy who gets paid to do this kind of stuff and doesn't have other things that he also is doing, but is getting paid to do this stuff, would probably have enough time to get uniforms ordered, scheduling, all that stuff, so thank you for your time.
Robert Marsden.
I haven't appeared before to speak to you, but thank you for the opportunity. Baseball is very important to me, and I'm here kind of to tell you and share a little bit about my story, but also give you a few things to think about in terms of baseball. I am a special agent for the United States government, a public servant, I've served in that role for 28 years. Like you, as a public servant, serving the people is important to me. I'm also a business owner, I own two businesses, employ roughly 150 people in the state of Montana, and I know what it takes to organize, to budget, and to consider everything you're considering. So I appreciate your time, effort, and thoughtfulness in this process. What I want to share with you most of all is, for me, I am 100% certain that I would not be here today if it wasn't for high school baseball. See, I grew up in Central Maine, I was a high school baseball player, I attended college on a full Division I baseball scholarship, and I'm pretty certain I wouldn't have had the opportunity to attend college if it wasn't for baseball and what baseball did for me. The last thing I want to talk to you a little bit is about all these men and women who have shown up here today and represented the baseball community and what they mean, and what they mean to these children and this opportunity for the children. And what I'm talking about is that in society, we are plagued in terms of mentorship, values, and high school baseball and athletics are so much more about wins, so much more about mentorship, showing up for people than about wins and losses, ERAs, home runs, statistics. It's about teaching kids values, it's about teaching kids about character, resiliency, failure specifically in baseball, and like no other sport, baseball does that for young kids. So I understand that there are challenges in terms of money, but I think it is incredibly important that we consider the value that high school athletics and specifically high school baseball has for these young men. And you've heard it from a couple of them that I fully believe if we support high school baseball and we provide that opportunity to people, these boys will-
Your time's up, please finish.
Okay, these boys will come back and pay that forward. Thank you for your time.
Max Cannon.
Okay, looks like the mic has been left on. I'm here because baseball actually is my life-
Please tell us your name and spelling.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, like most others that is here, baseball is my life. I started playing as a child at the age of 10, and I remember fundraising myself, I went on a pop bottle drive to buy my first mitt. So as far as fundraising goes, these folks are going to get it done, I can guarantee it. I've had the pleasure of being involved with Little League baseball for 15, well, just 50 years, and every single boy that has stepped up here to talk and their parents and stuff, you know, I've got a deep appreciation for, I've been, I played Legion baseball in Missoula '76, '77, '78, and I've been very lucky to have been an umpire for that program for 40 years. So my ties with baseball are huge, and the previous gentleman just talked about opportunity. If we don't give the children opportunities, they can't excel in anything. We have to give them the opportunity. Baseball is a game of failure, we all know that, but I'll guarantee you that every young man or woman that wants to play baseball will relish the opportunity to play it, but it must be given to them. We must give them the opportunity. I was not, and have never been, a parent, not that lucky, but I've got thousands of kids, in the sense that I care about every one of them, and every one of them, when I was coaching, they were all my kids, as an umpire, they're all my kids. Going on three generations now, it's been a lot of fun, and I see a lot of familiar faces on the board, as well as behind me and in the hallway. I'm here as an advocate for high school baseball, I respect the Legion program immensely, I hope the good Lord allows me to be on the diamond again with them next season. It's not about me, it's not my time on the diamond, I've had my time, I want the kids to have their time. So thank you for your time, and please say yes.
Mikell or Michael Wallace.
And one thing that I noticed that we talked about tonight was the women's wrestling program and how we don't have a lot of girl wrestlers right now, but if you do travel, I have a wrestler son, and if you travel to many of the other cities, a lot of them have quite big wrestling programs, actually, and ours could be next year, right? We could be the one that has the big wrestling program next year, you never know when those girls are going to jump in and be there, because there's a lot of, it's really growing, and there's a lot of teams that do have a whole lot of girls that wrestle. And so, I think putting that out there and weighing that against the girl wrestlers isn't really fair. Another thing that I was, I don't think, we keep talking about how it's not going to be perfect, it's not going to be great if we play this year. I don't think any one of these boys are expecting it to be perfect this year. I don't think any of them expect it to be 100% this year. I think they know that going into it, if we pass it in 2024. I had a group of seniors sitting at my table the other day, and they want to play baseball really bad. They don't expect it to be perfect, they're not used to playing on anything but what they already have, so why do we have to change that? Let them play on what they have, and let them have this senior year, because you're taking that away from them, and that's not fair to those boys. Thank you.
Stephanie Tennis.
Thank you, I'm the one that's been coughing in the back obnoxiously, so I'll apologize, but I want to thank you, first of all-
Stephanie, I have to ask you to spell your name, too?
Sorry. So I just want to take one minute to, well, maybe not a minute, but thank you for allowing me to be the principal at Sentinel High School. I haven't had the opportunity to meet you, so nice to meet you, but it truly has been a personal and professional joy to have come to Sentinel High School. I have three major roles in my life, and the two I'm going to talk about are being a mom of three kids, two that are baseball players, and being the principal at Sentinel High School. Both roles, I take more seriously than anything in my life. My kids have benefited from baseball. I am a huge advocate of baseball. I started my career in baseball before teaching. I don't think that it's any question whether or not baseball should be offered in Missoula, I think it's a no-brainer. I moved here from Helena with my family a year ago, and the one selling point for my now freshman was the strong youth baseball programs from Little League, he played against kids all the way up through now he's a Legion baseball player. But what I'm here to talk about really is my role as the principal at Sentinel High School. And, you know, I know the Esser Curve or the Esser Cliff, whatever you want to call it, is there, and somebody mentioned that these people knew that, and I agree, I think in most cases they did, but it's still very real and it's very raw to people, and we have a lot on our plate internally to work with this year. We have some very significant special education research and program development that needs to happen in our building. We have many things that are going on within the school, it doesn't mean we don't have time for baseball, but what it means is it pulls us in so many directions that what are we going to do really, really, really well? And we need to do the things that we commit to very well. And I do think baseball needs to happen, I think that's clear, but I am asking that we give us a little more time as building administrators to be able to work through this process, be able to filter out everything, this really just hit us, in all honesty. And I'm going to take some responsibility for that and not attending board meetings. That's been a big eye-opener, and we need to do that so we know what is coming down and be in more in tune to the- and be in more in tune to those things. But this literally just hit us, week and a half, maybe two weeks ago at the most. So it, it's a little of a shocker.
Your time is up, please finish.
Okay, nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone whose name I have not called who would like to make a public comment tonight? Please come up to the microphone and say and spell your name.
My name is Joe, Joe Fulford, J O E F U L F O R D. I've thought a lot about what I would say to the board tonight, kind of wondering why we're all here, seems like a simple decision. I'd also like to say there are some outside decisions, things that have involved the Missoula Mavericks, and I want to say that I have a great respect for them, just this year, had a great opportunity to visit with their staff and see if that was something that my children wanted to do. We opted out, had a great conversation with the coaches. But we're not here to discuss the Missoula Mavericks. And I would say, if there are any issues involving their organization, I think us as a community, we should all band together to make sure that their organization continues in its effort to, to continue to teach baseball to these young boys. But what we are here to discuss is the MCPS structure, its voting, and these young men behind me. I have heard some great discussion tonight, I agree with a lot of it, I love the philosophy of baseball. I think we could all learn a little bit more from these young men behind us, in talking about things involving our budgets, and things about talking about our teachers, about our unions. And I would ask you to learn some lessons from these young boys, some of the lessons of failure, and opportunity, and progression. And remind us that our stewardship is not necessarily over us or as a board, but is towards these young men, which I've heard great comments from parents, and I really appreciate the young men and their opportunities to get up here and speak. And I want to urge you, in your decisions, to vote, because you absolutely have two decisions to make tonight. There's a yes, and there's a no. And that's what I've really been thinking about, as I've heard discussions about Ridgway, Title IX, our teachers, other sports. And these young boys have heard blah, blah, blah. What the message that we are going to teach these young men? Is it going to be Carpe Diem? Or wait till next year? Are we going to, as educators in philosophy or whatever, teach our students to wait till next year? I love athletics, I love baseball, I love everything there is about baseball. I was an absolute stud in football. I lettered four years in my high school. You all know what my favorite sport was? Baseball. I don't know why. Only time I ever got along with my dad was when we played baseball. I loved that sport. These young men are going to hear from you tonight. They are going to hear that we did everything that you asked us to do, budgets, restraints, whatever we needed from you, whatever you needed from us, we did that. But they don't care. They're going to hear "wait till next year" from you guys. Are we going to be the ones to tell them? Tough. Deal with it.
Your time's up, please finish.
I would urge you to vote now, vote yes, and teach these young men what you've all been professing to teach them, especially in our school systems. Right now, not next year. Thank you.
Please come up to the table and say and spell your name.
My name is Carson Dipwick, C A R S O N D Y P W I C K, and I played baseball as a young kid, and I also played football, but I know how much baseball means to these kids behind, behind me. It means a lot to these seniors. And if you guys say yes, they will be happy, and they will be so glad that they are playing baseball for their senior year. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make public comment who has not yet spoken?
All right. Neil Castleton, N E I L C A S E L T O N. Ah, well, you guys have an unenviable task in front of you. I think my favorite comment of the night was, "I wish we could have had this on the agenda earlier." Whoever said that, comment of the night, well done. But, I mean, we've, we've gone over this ad nauseam at this point, so, you know, we need to wrap it up and, and get going. But what I wanted to say is, you know, if not now, when? You know, we'd all love to have a clearer picture of the financials and everything. Is that going to happen in a year? Who knows? What if we're in the same position next year? And we waste another year of not giving these kids a chance to play baseball? Right? So, every journey starts with a single step, and that step needs to happen tonight. We need a vote of yes for this year. Is it going to be a tough order? Absolutely. Will we get it perfect? Absolutely not. Okay? But there's a lot of people that are willing to do whatever it takes to get it done. And I think you're, you're well aware of the impact that we can have as a group, and we just, please allow us the opportunity to get that done for everybody that wants to play next year. Thank you.
Any others? No further public comment.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your public comments. So now, can we, can you please read back what the motion is on the table? 2025 is what the motion is on the table. All those in favor, this is the High School Agenda, Trustee Mercer.
2025 with fundraising, 2026 budget neutral as to men's sports. Is that right? Okay.
All right, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Trustee Wallach, Trustee Mercer, Trustee Witcher, Trustee Agarres, and Vice Chair Walker Andrews are yes. Those opposed? Trustee Witt, Trustee Vogel, Trustee Old Person, and Trustee Wake. Does motion pass? Motion passes. All right, motion pass. Now we'll move on to item number 11, which is Board of Trustees, information on the Montana School Boards Association update, and this will go over to Vice Chair Arlene Walker-Andrews. And again, this is information only.
And it will be very fast, because it's very late. I just wanted to say that in September, members of the Montana School Boards Association went to DC, and we talked to our delegation about federal funding for special ed.
I'm sorry, Arlene, we have to wait until it's a little quieter in here.
Okay. Quiet enough? Okay. So we talked to our delegation about federal funding for special ed, the extension of Esser deadlines, impacts of privatization, school nutrition assistance, school safety, and teacher and administrator recruitment and retention. My particular assignment was to talk about federal funding for special ed, so I used two examples, one, our budget and how much we spend on special ed, and the other was rural schools in particular, and the difficulties of rural schools to be able to keep the necessary personnel and other, other things that are necessary for special ed if students are leaving the system with the new law with special ed savings accounts. I also wanted to mention that then in October, there was a meeting of NCL in Billings, and a bunch of resolutions were brought by the Bozeman School District and the Columbia Falls districts to modify further the vision and gap analyses that we voted on last year. In particular, Columbia Falls was concerned about some of the issues that come up for more rural schools. Bozeman was concerned about things like the difference in cost of living in different school districts, and how our legislature just puts out the money as if they're all the same. Anyway, so those are being considered, the, the membership voted to have the MTSBA directors continue to think about it. And then, at that same meeting, there was a very interesting presentation by Jason Dougal, who's with the National, I want to say Committee Consortium, something or other, on education and economics, talking about international benchmarking and changing and transforming education. And along with him were Representative Lou Jones, and Representative Dave Beatty, and Senator Shannon O'Brien. And basically, they talked about, you know, trying to change schools from a factory model to a more individualized education that we talk about all the time, as a matter of fact. And then finally, I wanted to say that we need two delegates from this board on the Montana School Board Association, and I was going to nominate myself, only I don't see her, Ann Wake makes it easier denominator, but we do need two, two individuals to also serve as delegates. And that's all I'm going to say, because it's 10 o'clock.
All right. Any questions or comments from a trustee on this presentation?
Do we need to do that, then? Nominate?
Do we need to nominate, do you need that now?
We don't have to do it this minute, but we just need to, people, think about it, please.
We can, yeah. Yeah. We can do that. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? None. The time is now 10:02, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for tonight.